Thanks, everyone, for coming. Seven o'clock, we will call the Millville Special Town Meeting Public Hearing. Due order for the Finance Committee, it is 7:00 PM on October 29th. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, so there are no handouts for today, but I thought we would project some things on the screen, and as we go through the warrant, I'll have the warrant available on the screen as well. Just to give you a layout of how tonight is going to run, I have a very short presentation, just to kind of level set and give some basic facts for the Finance Committee Special Town Meeting Hearing tonight. And then, after we go through the presentation, we're going to review the warrant. So, in the review of the warrant, I am going to read each article. After I read the article, I'm going to invite the sponsor of the article to come up and speak on behalf of the article if they are present and wish to do that. After that happens, I'm going to invite anyone from the public who would like to come up and ask any questions of either the sponsor of the article or the Finance Committee to do so. I will also ask the Finance Committee to ask any questions of the sponsor of the article at that time. Once we get through everything, we're going to close public comment, and at that point, the Finance Committee will be in deliberations and we'll be voting upon the articles. So, a little bit different, once we kind of end that public comment section, that is going to indicate that the opportunity for the public to engage in any questions or comments has ended, and the Finance Committee will then, again, deliberate and vote on the articles accordingly. Okay? Any questions? All right. So, again, I didn't really anticipate putting together any kind of presentation for this, and I -- what ended up happening is I looked at the annual town meeting presentation just to kind of level set myself and refresh my memory as where we stood at the annual town meeting, and next thing I knew, I was updating slides. So, here we are. I don't think this is going to be very long, but I did want to spend just a couple of minutes kind of talking through -- these came directly from the annual town meeting presentation. If you recall, the first few slides were regarding the Finance Committee's plan. So, we had a three-step plan that we had presented. Step one was presented at annual town meeting as being completed, so this is really where we began our research and assessment of Millville's financial landscape, which allowed us to advocate for a budget for this past fiscal year. Then, the step that we indicated was upcoming for this coming year was step two. So, step two was identify, implement, and adhere to strong financial policies. So, we'll review what step two is. That is partially complete. As I was looking through that slide and refreshing my memory, you know, we're about halfway done, the six items that were on step two. So, we're halfway through the year, so I think we're in a pretty good place. And then, step three, that was more longer-term view, so that was more, you know, after we get through these initial steps and we complete them, step three was intended to give us the ability to feel that we were really operating with excellence, and we had strong financial policies to live by, and we were able to all kind of work under a specific framework. So, here was our step two. Again, we pulled this directly from the annual town meeting presentation. I highlighted in orange a status update, so those are my new additions. So, onboard, our new town administrator, Peter Crusoe, here he is in the flesh, here with us today. So, we're happy to say that we have successfully done that, and I would consider Peter to be fully onboarded at this point and really in the weeds as to what's happening in the day-to-day of the town. The second item was to help re-establish a productive capital planning committee. That is completed in terms of establishing and getting it up and running. We have the Capital Planning Committee Chairperson here in the audience and in the flesh. So, that is, you know, that's something that we're very proud of, that it's up and running, and we had the opportunity to have our first joint session with them the other day. So, they are in process of working through a comprehensive five-year plan. They're really starting from scratch. It's a brand-new committee with all-new faces, so that's what they're kind of working toward, and we're looking forward to see what comes from that committee in this coming year, leading up to annual town meeting. The third item was to create a master calendar to establish a process with strict timelines and deadlines for deliverables. So, the Finance Committee did propose a master calendar that was very detailed and has a timeline in place with set deliverables and dates. It was based off of the DLS documentation, which provides actually a lot of guidance as to how a municipality should be run. So, we proposed that back at the end of August. So, I would call that a work-in-process, but it is something that has been completed in terms of our Finance Committee's part in that, and we're just kind of waiting on comment from other parties involved and getting that up and running. And then, these final few items are extremely important and items that I think will become more established as we get toward the budget season and looking toward annual town meeting. Establish rules for stabilization and free cash utilization and recommended balances. So, this is really your financial policies and procedures. In looking through a lot of DLS information and speaking with a lot of different resources over at the state and different finance committees, strong policies and procedures is something that reoccurs and is talked about all the time. So, this is really being able to kind of know what our rule set is and make wise decisions based on what we have and, you know, the monies that we have coming in. That has not yet been established, and it is something that I think is a requirement leading into the annual town meeting. Next, complete an audit of town financial statements. This is also not yet been completed. We are told that there is something upcoming for January in starting an audit, but we have not yet had an audit of the town financial statement, so I would consider that another critical point of something that we are looking toward this year. And then, the next two items are really budgeting-type items, so identify the appropriate level of operational spending and chart revenue analysis and trends, both current and future. So, very important to understanding the whole picture of where we stand from a financial standpoint, but something that I would consider upcoming for this coming budget season. So, looking at this slide really helped me kind of level set myself and say, "What have we accomplished to date?" And, you know, I think we've accomplished a lot in a very short period of time. I also think that we have some very important things ahead of us, and so we shouldn't lose sight of that as we think through this special town meeting and the decisions that are before us. I'm not going to spend much time on this one. This one, again, we went through at our annual town meeting presentation, but this is very forward-looking in our ability to just continue to run the town year after year and make good decisions based on strong financial practices. Whoops, sorry. So, this slide is just meant to give an overview of stabilization funds. I did get a couple of questions on, you know, what is a stabilization fund? So, before I kind of go through this slide, I just wanted to explain why we're talking about stabilization funds. As of today, we don't currently have our free cash from 2019 certified. Okay? So, what that means is we have no cash that hasn't been allocated to a particular place yet. That is being worked on by the accounting team. We're told that it is upcoming soon, but as of today, it has not been certified, so it is not available to us at this special town meeting. As such, the only place we have to pull any monies and support these, specifically these capital items, is from our stabilization funds. So, just wanted to spend a minute talking about what a stabilization fund is and kind of what we have set up here in Millville for anyone who might not already know. So, this particular -- the information on this article comes from the DLS New Officials' Finance Forum, which was this past June in 2019. "A stabilization rainy day fund is a special reserve fund into which monies may be appropriated and reserved for later appropriation for any lawful purpose." So, it's really a savings account that we have set up. Millville has three, so we have a general stabilization fund, a capital stabilization fund, and a public safety stabilization fund. All three of those funds serve different purposes, and their titles are fairly self-explanatory. The general stabilization fund is our general savings account. It's not pegged for any particular purpose, and it can be used for any lawful purpose to fund that purpose. Then, there's the capital stabilization fund, which is reserved for capital items. And then, we have the public safety stabilization fund, which is used to fund capital -- public safety capital items. Okay? So, it's really just a savings account. The balances carry forward from year to year. They can be tapped into at any time, but those, you know, being able to access those funds does require a vote of the people, and the vote of the people is a two-thirds vote. So, two-thirds of the people at town meeting need to agree on any particular article that is pulling any kind of funds from stabilization. All right. So, this slide is an overview of all of the articles that are before us that would draw on our stabilization balances. So, you see the article numbers listed on the left-hand side. Article one is unpaid invoices. It's approximately $8,000. I think it's a little bit higher. That would be coming from our general stabilization fund. There's the police HVAC replacement system of $30,400. That would be coming from the general stabilization fund. There's the police generator for $11,000 that is expected to be proposed from the capital stabilization fund. A senior center generator of $17,000 for the capital stabilization fund. A police cruiser for $48,000 from the public safety stabilization fund. Feasibility study, which relates to water, to be pulled from general stabilization fund of $50,000. The Deprater Street reimbursement of $183,000 from general stabilization, and amend library budget of $29,500 for general stabilization. So, if you look, you'll see the beginning balances up at top, the proposed ending balances if everything were to pass at the bottom, and then, the percentage decrease from the beginning balance to the ending balance also at the bottom. So, a pretty large special town meeting warrant, you know, 38.83 percent of our overall stabilization balances would be drawn upon if all of these articles were to pass. Then, there are a couple of other articles that are financial in nature, and they don't relate to stabilization. So, the first is Article seven, and that's proposed borrowing by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. So, this is a debt exclusion that's being proposed of $1.8 million to replace a 28-year-old school boiler at the Millville Elementary School via the Massachusetts School Building Authorities Grant Program. It is eligible for 59.21 percent reimbursement from the MSBA, which means the loan we take out, well, the actual debt exclusion is 1.8 million, but we're being reimbursed 59 percent from the MSBA. This particular article requires a passage of a Proposition Two-and-a-Half debt exclusion vote. So, what that means is, at town meeting, we'll be presented with a question, and that question will be whether or not we should take to ballot this proposed borrowing by Blackstone Millville Regional School. If the town meeting votes yes, then there is a ballot vote that will need to be -- take place before the actual borrowing can happen. That ballot vote would be in early December, as I understand. December 4th. Okay? If the town meeting votes no, nothing happens, there's no borrowing, case closed. Yes, there. So, we'll entertain -- I'm sure there'll be some questions on this one, but really, what we're being presented on at town meeting is a question as to whether or not to bring this particular issue to a ballot vote of the people. Tax impact, so I do have some sample schedules that Mr. Aaronworth was able to provide that come from UniBank with the tax impact, so I'll have those available as we go through the articles. We can talk through that. It is, I would say, relatively small, I think, for $100,000 property. It was like $36 for the first year, or something like that. And then, if you have a $200,000 property, you'd multiply that by two. If you have a $300,000 property, you'd multiply that by three to kind of get your tax impact. So, we can talk through that as we go through the article. Okay? The other article that is financial in nature is the town bylaw personnel-proposed amendment to our bylaw. So, currently, there is a town bylaw that is intended to create a framework and compensation system for designated town employees. That bylaw, if you reference it, it's Chapter 20, Section 20-8, and I have a copy of that here as well, so we can talk through the current bylaw if anyone has any questions once we get to it. But it requires the town administrator to frequently assess and propose changes to the comprehensive -- to the compensation plan, which should be considered during the annual budget process and at town meeting. So, it basically is structured to list town employees and personnel and put the salary -- the salary range associated with each one of those town employees, so minimum, medium, and maximum, and it lists, you know, quite a few employees, so we could go through the list of what it lists. So, the ranges involved, again, there's a low range, a medium range, and a maximum range cap. So, it's really a salary cap based on a particular position. The bylaw is intended to be updated regularly, so it's not intended to create a framework that stays forever. Obviously, times change, salaries change, wage change changes, so the bylaw dictates that. The town administrator is really charged with coming up with a fair system to propose to the town and update regularly according to the bylaw. So, the current bylaw includes a minimum, medium, and maximum cap on salaries for many employees, but the ones in question on this particular article are the fire chief, the town accountant, the town administrator, and the police chief. So, I listed here exactly what is in the current bylaw under, you know, as you see listed here. That's what's currently in the bylaw. So, the proposed revision under Article 11 removes the specified compensation system for those particular employees and replaces with the word "by contract." So, what it in essence does is it permits the Board of Selectmen to negotiate salaries with the above personnels, the fire chief, the town accountant, the town administrator, and the police chief, at their discretion, so not according to a particular outline within the bylaw. All right. So, just kind of in summary, as we mentioned, the current balance in free cash is $0. It's not yet certified for fiscal year 2019. So, all requests for funding sources other than the town bylaw and personnel, which is really not a request for funding, and the school borrowing item will be voted on from our stabilization accounts. The total amount of the stabilization requests as they present themselves in the warrant is $376,900. If all requests were to pass, then the stabilization accounts will be depleted by 38 percent. Before a comprehensive capital plan is put in place, the financial policies are implemented and an audit is completed. Couple other notes, is the Capital Planning Committee, as I mentioned, is now up and running and committed to delivering a comprehensive five-year plan by the May annual town meeting, and the Finance Committee is still committed to our multi-step plan and, you know, believe that if we work the plan, the plan will work, so. Thank you. All right. So, if there's any questions on the content that we just discussed -- I have to figure out how to do this here. On the right, right? There we go. People can see it well enough here. Okay? So, as I mentioned, now that we kind of got through the presentation piece, we'll go through the warrant one by one, the articles. So, I will attempt to present the articles on the screen, and I will also read through them in full. And after we finish each one, I will stop. I will ask the presenter of the article or the sponsor of the article if they would like to speak on behalf of the article. I will open it up to public comment or questions, and then, once all the comments and questions have been answered, I'll move forward to the next article.
(inaudible)
Yes? Sure.
I'm the chair of the Capital Planning Committee, and I've got a few notes around some confusion regarding a capital plan that was posted today to the town website, so I just wanted to use this opportunity to clarify that. So, the plan that's there is not from the current Capital Planning Committee. This was done by our town accountant, Justin Cole, and it is over two years old. In fact, that was posted without knowledge of the Capital Planning Committee consultation or a vote, even though it was passed out at the meeting on Thursday. We weren't asked if it should be posted or if we thought it was a good idea or consulted in any way. There are many inaccuracies in the plan, so if you take a look at the school HVAC, for example, it budgeted $20,000, and as you can see in the warrant, we're asked -- there's the debt exclusion asked for 1.8 million, so it's quite a large difference. And I understand that we may want to share information to be transparent, but we also want to be accurate, so a difference of 1.78 million would be inaccurate. So, and lastly, my own personal opinion, I obviously don't think that it's something that we should be consulted with. We should be consulting in terms of our spend for this year. And I guess, lastly, I just want to apologize that this misinformation got out to the capital and apologize to the Capital Planning Committee members, because I really feel that this undermines the credibility of the Capital Planning Committee. And although we've only had a few meetings, we are expecting to work very hard on that plan for the five-year spend, and I obviously don't have the recognition or relationship that I need to have to ensure that I'm at least asked or consulted when information like this is shared. So, that's something that I will work to change and do the best that I can to make sure when information is shared, we are at least consulted. But really, I think that should have been voted on, on whether it should have been posted or not. So, I don't know if there are any questions on that?
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so let's start at the -- oh, good, you got me moving on the thing already. Okay. Article one, unpaid invoices from prior fiscal year. "To see if the town will vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 64, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money necessary for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from prior fiscal years or take any other action relative thereto," submitted by town administrator and town accountant. Explanation: "This article seeks authorization of town meeting to pay prior bills, which is required pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 64. Passage of this article requires a nine-tenths majority or unanimous vote." So, Peter, could you -- would you mind coming up and just telling us
Sure.
what the balance of the unpaid invoices is, and if there's anything else you would like us to know about this article?
Sure. So, there are two bills here that came in later in the year, actually in September. One is for Board of Health landfill engineering and monitoring. The amount of that bill is $2,817.64. The other one is from TEC Engineering for stormwater management and monitoring, and that, the balance is $6,144.04. So, we -- services were performed.
That was for services during FY '19.
That's correct. So, that, the deep -- for example, the TEC bill came in in September, but it was for June services.
Yeah, so I just went back, just to kind of confirm a few things. I went back to budget versus actuals for both of those, for Board of Health and for stormwater. And they were -- so, for stormwater, the bill, like you just said, was 6,000 and change, right? Stormwater was under its budget by 9,000. So, it's within, you know, it basically is within the budget to actuals that we kind of, you know, developed, right? And have been tracking, and the same thing with Board of Health. So, they were -- their actual spend was 9,000 less than what they were budgeted for FY '19, so that, you know, those expenses fall right in line with kind of what we'd expect to be flowing to free cash, hopefully.
Are there any questions, or does anyone have any comments related to this article?
Do we ever accrue what we expect unpaid invoices to be, or is that not something that municipalities do? Let's go, Sue.
No town accountant. But we do have encumbrances, and that's where you do identify what you're going to pay after the year's over, if you know what it is. I would say, in these two cases, we didn't know they existed or were coming.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none. Article two, fund capital item, police HVAC system. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from the general stabilization fund the amount of $30,400 to replenish the reserve fund for police department building HVAC system replacement or take any other action relative thereto," submitted by town administrator and Finance Committee. Explanation: "This article provides for replenishment of the reserve fund budget, originally $35,000 for fiscal year 2020, for amounts previously authorized by the Finance Committee to fund the unanticipated purchase of a police HVAC system, including replacement of the air conditioning, conversion of forced hot air from oil to propane, and installing all-new ceiling ducting to replace the corroded and damaged floor ducting." At the time of this writing, the balance of general -- the general stabilization fund was $624,620. This article requires a two-thirds vote. So, since the Finance Committee are co-sponsors of this article, I will give everyone just kind of a summary of what happened here and what this item is, and then, if you have questions on the actual repair, Chief Landry or Peter could maybe answer those. You probably can't. So, an item was brought to us a couple of months ago about an issue at the police station regarding the HVAC system, and specifically, the ducting and air ventilation of the HVAC system in the police station. So, it was brought to us as a public safety concern. We were notified that the problems with the old HVAC system and the airflow quality were creating, you know, major health and safety concern for the employees working in the building, and needed to be replaced immediately. So, there was an issue not only with the air conditioning not working properly, but a concern that once the heating was to come on, the ventilation in the police station would be unsafe for any individuals working in there. So, the Finance Committee made the determination at that time that the issue could not wait for a special town meeting, so we did vote in favor to transfer $30,400 from our reserve fund to the police station, the police line item, to fund this particular issue. I have been notified that the system has now been replaced and is up and running, so this capital expense has basically been funded, but it's been funded by the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. So, this article would replenish the Finance Committee Reserve Fund back to its $35,000 beginning balance, and what that will do is it will allow the Finance Committee to have $35,000 left for the remainder of the year to the extent any emergencies come up. So, the Finance Committee is very diligent, and what we approve from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, we go through a thorough process of requesting documentation and support for anything that we approve, and typically, it's, you know, something that is very much an emergency and unforeseen. So, if this were not to pass, then basically what that means is the Finance Committee has approximately fi -- a little less than $5,000 left for emergencies coming through the rest of the year. What that means is if there's an emergency that comes up and the Finance Committee doesn't have the funding in their reserve fund to cover that, it would require a special town meeting to be -- to take place, and the issue would be brought before the people. Are there any questions or comments about this article? Yes, Jerry? I'm sorry, I know
That's okay. I get it.
I just want everyone to hear you at home.
Jerry Finn, 47 Girl Street. Just out of curiosity, the amount you're talking about is $35,000, I think, is that the cap that the -- you folks have from the Finance Committee in terms of what it is you have available to you?
That's historically been the amount that has been allocated, so we've stuck with that amount. There's no requirement that it be $35,000. It's just what's been proposed throughout the years and typically where we
Typically, on that $35,000, has it been exceeded at many times or has not been exceeded? I'm just curious, with 35. I'm not saying it isn't necessary.
Yeah, no, I know.
Probably is, or maybe higher. Just don't know whether that is that -- any history on that as to whether it is greater or less than?
I have been on the Finance Committee only a couple of years. I can say
You're going to get it, Brian.
Yeah. I can say that.
This is part of our questioning that we had at one of our recent meetings, where I brought up the topic of the way we account for when we use the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund. And so, getting a deeper understanding of that, we're not exactly sure at this point whether we've fully used the 35 every year or not. So, the short answer to that is no. We don't know.
We don't know. Okay. I was just curious. I didn't know what the exact number was.
So, I would say, because I've spent considerable amount of time looking over past budgets, it's a variable -- there's a lot of variability to that account. So, there's been years when there's been very little drawdown. It seems like there always is some drawdown, just as we did at the end of this year, last year, where we're paying off some bills that were
That's what I thought it was primarily useful.
Yeah, usually, it's toward the end of the year. Like, last year was the very last
That's what I thought. To Gary's point, that's what I always thought that it was for. So, I'm saying to myself, "Okay, it's 35. So, that's an anticipated amount of money that you have against some encumbrances," as you want to call it, "that are payable. I got it. I didn't realize it could be used for an emergency situation, this, and I'm okay with that because you need to eat the building. I don't have an issue with it." I was just curious what the amount was and how you came up with it, and I'm sure you researched and come up with the answers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Legally, I think the fund is designated to be for an unforeseen and/or extraordinary situation.
Correct.
So, that's kind of what the benchmark is, and look, my recommendation of the Finance Committee will always be, "Can't it wait for a town meeting?" Because I would much prefer the townspeople be making these decisions and not the Finance Committee. So, we went through a pretty lengthy discussion on the HVAC system as to whether or not it could wait for the special town meeting. And I would say, we were not, you know, we were not decided initially how we felt on it, and we ended up because of the health and safety concerns and because the and safety concerns, and because the project could be completed before town meeting, we decided to approve it. But that will always be the benchmark for us, is can it wait for the town meeting? If yes, we're not going to decide on it.
Fair enough.
Any other questions on this? Okay. Moving on. Article three, fund capital item police station generator. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from the capital stabilization fund the amount of eleven thousand dollars to replace the police department building generator, or to take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by town administrator and police department. Explanation: This article provides funding for replacement of the police station generator, which has passed its useful life and has recently failed. The police station requires power at all times for communications, security, heat, light, and all other public safety operations. At the time of this writing, there is a hundred thousand dollars in the capital stabilization fund. This article requires a two-thirds vote. First, I would invite either Peter or Chief Landry to speak on behalf of this article, if you so wish.
Good evening. Just a little history on the generators. I did have F and M generator come in today to evaluate the generator in the police station, in the old generator at Town Hall. History-wise, the generator in the police department is thirty-seven years old. It was made by Hercules. It's no longer serviceable or repairable, or nor can you find parts. It does have either a cracked head or a head gasket. They, were not willing to repair it if they could even try. They recommended that we simply trash it. So I looked at the possibility of relocating the generator at Town Hall. That was probably worse news than my generator. That generator is now illegal, no longer meets EPA admissions. It's illegal to move that generator to any other public building in town. That's also at the end of its life cycle. They recommended do nothing with that generator at all. And I do have his name, if you wanted to call him directly for any other input. It was Mr. Beltra, very knowledgeable about the, and he was actually part of the installations years ago, he said. So they're both really not repairable. They need to be replaced. So that's the end of that. So now, so why do we need a generator? Well, you know, unfortunately, unfortunately, all police departments are considered critical facilities. The government, federal, state, and town residents expect that to be open in the case of an emergency. Now where do you go, and who do you call when something happens? If we don't have electricity, we can't maintain a lot of our own equipment, never mind mandated standards that we have imposed on us by the state, which I brought along with me, and I can certainly give to anyone for your own pleasure reading. First of all, Department of Health, they have their own standards where we have to maintain heat, electricity, air condition if the heat's too, if it's too warm, and abundance of other issues. That's mandated by CMIs or statutes in law. So that's from their perspective. We have another one from the, from SEJIS, which is an arm of the FBI that sends all information to us through the internet. That server or terminal has to be open twenty-four seven. It cannot go down at any time. That's a requirement by them. We'd be in violation of federal law if that goes down. So if we lost electricity for more than a couple of minutes, they get that, we'd probably lose our license, and at that point, I have no idea what we would do. Then I did more research, and this is just a little bit of research. You look at the, I put my glasses on, but the, the National Electric Code as well requires a full generator in all critical buildings. And we are, once again, by definition, from FEMA, in the government, a emergency building. So at the end of the day, we really have no choice but to replace this generator. We certainly can't repair the one we have. So we looked at a generator similar to the one that's installed at Town Hall. It's around eleven thousand dollars. Very briefly, that's an air-cooled generator. F and M told me today, it's okay. It'll work for hours upon hours, but it's not meant to be used for four to five days. They would request some, something different, a more commercial generator, similar to the one that we have now at Town, the Old Town Hall. And that price tag was about twenty-six thousand dollars. The other one will work. It's eleven thousand dollars. I don't anticipate, you know, losing electricity for four days. If it did, it could struggle providing that electricity to us for four days because it's air-cooled. The other one's water-cooled, so that's similar to the engine in your car. Can run indefinitely. So I have, you know, some concern going the lesser way. I know it's a little bit late in the, in program to switch to twenty-six thousand, but I do believe, given the amount of time we've used the generator and the length of time we've lost electricity, that we would be in that position not to have electricity for days on end. So I think I'm comfortable with the eleven thousand and putting in the smaller generator. But at the end of the day, and I can leave this with you, Gary, or anyone else, we're a critical facility. If this generator's not passed, I don't have any answer to the violations that we would impose, or be imposed upon. So that's all the information I have for that.
Okay.
Questions?
No, I mean, I think for our purposes, since we're making recommendations on the warrant as posted, we would only be considering eleven thousand dollars just from a, just from a procedural standpoint, but then to the extent, you know, any other motions were made on the floor at town meeting, that may or may not be allowed by the moderator, I guess.
Okay.
So I don't have any questions. Does anyone have any questions from the finance committee?
I have, I have one, just kind of, and this may be for you or for Peter, or both, but I'm curious as to why we chose capital stabilization as opposed to public safety stabilization for this. Just from a, just thinking about it all.
Yeah, speak to TA for that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. I'll come to the next to the chief.
You're in casual clothes now, so I can't count on you to protect me. No, so it was my understanding that we, you know, the Public Safety Stabilization Fund is principally, from what I understand, designed for vehicles and equipment that these guys need. This is more of a capital item. This is a building item, a facility item, not, you know, turnout gear or whatever kind of gear that they might, or the cars or the ambulances and so forth. So that's really why I pegged that. Arguably, if we had free cash available, we would be looking to that instead, but we don't. Yet. We might still, but we don't. Does anyone want to read the information? I tabbed it. Let's make it easier to read.
I don't need to. Does anyone else want it? Thank you, though. I appreciate you being here.
You shouldn't go too far.
Does anyone have any other questions about Article three, police station generator? Okay. Can you move me up?
Oh, yes.
My page turner.
There we are. There we are.
Okay. Article four, fund capital item senior center generator. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from the capital stabilization fund the amount of seventeen thousand dollars to add a generator to the Millville Senior Center, which serves as one of the town's emergency centers, or to take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by town administrator and MEMA director. Explanation: This article provides funding for installation of a generator at the Millville Senior Center. And the senior center serves as one of two primary emergency shelters, serving seniors as well as other residents, and as such, requires HVAC and light power when used, when used during storms and other events. A MEMA grant has been applied for, so the need for this funding may be reimbursed if the grant is approved. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Would either Mr. Crusoe or Chief Landry like to come up and give a summary of this article?
As the MEMA director, it's my job to prepare the town for any type of emergency, where we're going to go if something happens. We no longer have an EOC, which is the Operating Command Center. It was located in the Old Town Hall, so now we don't have one. The police department's a little bit too small to get involved in any type of EOC operation, when you may have-
Could you just explain what an EOC is for anyone who might not know?
Emergency Operating Center. It's where you would gather, whether it be the Board of Selectmen and other state officials, in the, in the event of a major disaster. You would have a focal point. You'd meet at one place. You'd have communications there. It'd be a long-term event, like a long hurricane or a blizzard, where you'd have to have assets coming in. You'd have to use the management system, and that's what it's all about. So you need a place for that. The Old Town Hall had a basement with twenty phones, TVs, computers, it's all set up for that event. It's all gone. So now we need a new location. Like I mentioned, police department's a little bit too small. Town Hall has their own operations and things you have to do in Town Hall. The Senior Citizen Center is pretty well-equipped for anything long-term, other than a generator. Because once you're there, you're going to bring equipment that has to be utilized, whether it be TVs, monitors. So that was the, the practical place to have an EOC, an operating center. The school's a little bit more, you know, involved. If you ever tried to utilize the school, we have to jump through too many hoops to get that kind of accomplished with the school and the students, depending on what time of the year it is. So it makes sense for the Senior Citizen Center. And it serves a dual purpose as a shelter. In a way, I really can't designate it as a complete shelter if it doesn't have electricity to maintain heat and other requirements. It has another purpose as a general benefit to the seniors themselves when they're in the building, should they lose any electricity. So it's a three-pronged benefit to the town, where it benefits MEMA, and the seniors itself, and the shelter aspect of it. So that's why, you know, we applied for it. We did apply for a grant. I'm waiting on the grant. I'm hopeful we get the grant, but I can't forecast if we get it or not. So at the end of the day, it's a, it's a needed building to upgrade. Too bad it wasn't built with one when it was built, you know, a few years ago. But the bottom line is, we need, we need another shelter, other than the school, should something happen. And we need an EOC, which is almost required through MEMA for grant funding. And we don't have that right now. So as a MEMA director, I'm looking for a place to relocate, and that would fit the bill, and we wouldn't be taking over the Senior Citizen Center, anything like that. It's just a place we would go in a major event, a major emergency. It is a town building, so we certainly have the right to do that. So that's all.
Questions from the committee? Thank you, Chief.
So I just want to understand why the school, well, first of all, how many EOCs are required by law in the town?
Every, every town needs an EOC.
Just what?
Right.
Okay. So why isn't the school going to serve that purpose for us?
Oh, it's, you know, the school has their own business to attend to, especially the time of the year, if school's in session or not. And we have to occupy some space, and we have to bring in some equipment. And, and the other thing is, you're bringing in people who technically should be car-rechecked, believe it or not. And that's too, too difficult a task to do in a quick amount of time. And then we have to arrange to use the school, usually have to employ janitors. It's more convoluted than simply going over to the Senior Citizen Center. It's a building that we may own, the school, but we certainly have control.
So how many people can the senior center house, like at one time, safely during an emergency?
I think it was, quote me, maybe seventy-five people, up to ninety people.
But the school could house how many people during an emergency?
It's the difference between, well, yeah, whatever the capacity is. That's something we have to work out with the school committee. We just can't obviously go in there and take over the school for extending amounts of time.
I understand that. I'm just thinking, this is for an emergency where the town's lost power, we're in a hurricane situation, something like that. So I'm just, want to understand why-
Probably school's not in session, right? I would think if we're in an emergency where we needed to be in an EOC situation, I wouldn't be thinking students would be something we'd have to worry about. So that's-
But that's all. They, that's just a thought on my part to, if we have the funding, it's great to have it. If we don't, we don't.
I guess, I would ask if there's something we need to address with the school, to make it easier-
Yeah, Gary, that's, you know, they cooperate with me, don't get me wrong. But when you call up-
Careful the school's here.
Okay. When you call up, you know, I got to reach out either to the superintendent or vice superintendent, right, and line up a, maybe a janitor, tell them the purpose, why we're going there, how long we're going to be there, what we need. And it's their school, technically, right? So it's not the easiest thing to do. Like if something happened tonight, and they really needed that building, say we had a large contamination site, and the feds were coming in, well, school's going to be open tomorrow, but we still need an EOC to go to. We could take this building over, but Peter may have a problem with that.
You're always welcome.
So that's, that's your only reason for it.
In your time, I guess, as police chief, how, how, I know it's emergency, but I'm just curious, have you ever needed to actually use an EOC? Like, how often does this type of thing happen?
We only, in my time, we've used the shelter once at the school, maybe twice, and once at the seniors last year. As an EOC, no. We may never use it as an EOC, but, but the guidelines are, you have to be prepared.
You have to have one. Yep, understood.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Jackie Lima, question?
So I was just, Jackie Lima, thirty-three Allard Court, that's where I live today. I was just wondering, so in thinking this through, and in the spirit of cooperations with boards and committees and things like that, if it's difficult at times to coordinate this, or it presents challenges with the schools, I was just wondering, has anybody reached out to the COA, or the senior center, to figure out what sort of, maybe restrictions or, you know, impositions might be there? You know, it seems that it's, it's, there are hurdles at the school. I'm just wondering, has the COA voted as a board to support the use of their building as an EOC or as a shelter? Just wondering.
No.
No?
I haven't heard of two of them yet. The first obstacle is-
Wait, can you come and talk here? Because when I watch this at home, I won't be able to hear you.
The answer to that is no, because the first obstacle is actually to get a generator. And if the CO, you know, if it went down in flames and they really weren't agreeable to use it for that reason, well, we still have the shelter, which would certainly take precedent if we had to, and the ability for the seniors to use a generator if something happens as well. So like I mentioned, there's three benefits to it. I'm not saying all three would work, but it's something I have to try for and present. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from anyone, or comments? Ellen?
Just a brief comment.
Wait till you're sitting to start talking. Wait till you're sitting to start talking, so we can hear you.
As a former member of the COA, and I was chairman for a number of years, I recall that we did have in the budget, I think it is, seven thousand or eight thousand dollars that has never been used, and it was specifically earmarked for a generator. So I don't know what this is all about, a seventeen thousand dollar generator. You know, I don't know. But we, we do have money in the budget, seven thousand. Did anyone contact the chief about that? I don't know.
Seven thousand won't work.
I, I have a letter that says they did.
It helps.
I have a letter that says they did.
Can I thank them?
So, okay. Something about they were going to give you the seven thousand. That's my, my question. Can they just do that?
Give me seven thousand. I would have taken if they offered it.
But that's my question. I guess you, nobody knows that answer, because there's nobody here from the COA.
When did they offer that? How long ago? Very broadly, it may have, years ago, before it was MEMA chief. I'm not sure.
I think it was the beginning of September. I have a-
September, okay, okay.
But my question is, what do you do with that seven thousand? We just hand it over to you?
Yeah, be nice.
Yeah, just to have, doesn't-
Or you would have to wait through five years.
Nobody seems to have that answer, and the COA members are not here, so.
Well, I think if, if they do have that money, it could be applied towards what I need.
Yeah, so it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been a seventeen thousand.
No, it is that much for that generator.
Yeah, but I mean, if we have seven-
Yeah, twelve, right. That's correct.
Okay, yeah, Mike, we're getting yelled at from Mike, so no side conversations. Thanks, Tim.
I guess we can't go beyond this.
Thank you, Ellen.
Nobody here.
Thanks.
Call me, I'll see you.
Any other questions or comments on this article? Yes, Erica?
Not sure, but does the, Erica Blake, Taldever Road, the elementary school, is it air-conditioned? Does it know there's certain portions air-conditioned? Does anybody know?
Yes.
Certain portion?
Portions.
Okay. Because I went to the senior center this year, when they were using it as a cooling center. And as I drove up, I said, wow, they don't have a generator. So I noticed that. But if they have a cool-
Have a generator as well.
Right, right. But I couldn't remember if part of the school is air-conditioned, because that's one of the reasons we have, you know, a cooling center would need a generator at times. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so just- Okay, so just, because not all responses were on the mic. The question that Erica had was whether or not the school had air conditioning, and the answer provided by the school representatives is yes, it does. Any other questions or comments?
Jerry Finn, forty-seven Grove Street, just out of curiosity. The chief had mentioned seventeen grand for the generator. I also heard him mention, and I have been privileged to see, in the basement prior, where they had the twenty-odd phones or twelve phones they had down there, all the electrical things they needed to be in emergency situations so they could handle it. Does a seventeen grand cover all that and a place to house the generator? Or is a seventeen grand for the generator? And I know from past experience up at the COA up there and working with those folks, they're pretty tight on space up there. So I'm just curious, there's a seventeen grand, get us a generator, and then we need, you know, X amount to try to get us a place to house it and a place to then hitch it up, bring in the phones, bring in the... So if we have an emergency, you just flip the switch and away you go. Just curious, because I've seen the one in the basement we had prior.
Thank you. Chief, could you come up and answer that one?
The seventeen thousand's all-inclusive of the generator itself and installation. So that's not part of an EOC. That would be something totally different. Those funds come from a different source, nothing to do with our budget or the senior citizen center. And everything now is, which is seen before, is old technology in the basement of the town hall, wires, telephone, everything's wireless now. So as long as the router's up and running and the internet's running, we're good. And plus we bring in microwave antennas, so that issue's not really the same as it was years ago.
Okay, so cost to the town to convert the senior center into a EOC?
Zero.
Zero, so seventeen thousand for a generator and then that's it?
That's right. Because we'll bring in our own equipment and we take out the equipment. It really consists of laptops and things of that nature.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Moving on, Article Five, Fund Capital Item Police Cruiser. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund the amount of no more than forty-eight thousand dollars to purchase a new replacement police cruiser or take any other action relative thereto, submitted by Town Administrator and Police Department. Explanation: This article provides funding for replacement of the oldest of four police cruisers used daily. The one being replaced has nearly one hundred thousand miles and is over six years old and out of warranty. Current Ford Explorer cruisers outfitted properly for Millville's needs cost nearly forty-eight thousand dollars. At the time of this writing, the police department was evaluating the applicability of utili... I think it's supposed to say utilizing another brand vehicle, which costs nearly thirty-eight thousand dollars. Final recommendation of the best vehicle for Millville will be made at town meeting. Funding for this comes from Public Safety Stabilization Fund, which is designed for these types of purposes and is expected to have approximately two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars available at the time of town meeting. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Would Mr. Crusoe or Chief Landry like to come up and speak on behalf of this article?
He needs to rest a little. The wording is applicability and utility that they're evaluating in the thirty-eight thousand dollar cruiser. And the chief tells me that he's happy with the thirty-eight thousand dollar cruiser at this stage. So the motion would be for thirty-eight thousand at the special town meeting. As far as the stabilization fund, as we talked at the joint meeting, there'll be at least ninety thousand dollars in that stabilization fund while the full amounts that can be transferred to the stabilization's Public Safety Stabilization Fund get finalized. We expect it'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-forty thousand plus when all is said and done. But by the time of town meeting, we may not have all of that amount in that fund. And so again, you're talking about replacing cruisers every period. I think the chief is now talking about eighteen months as a reasonable timeframe to replace these cruisers. They're, you know, this one has a hundred thousand miles and I don't know how many hours of idling. They typically run, you know, when they're running, when the cruiser's being used, it's mostly turned on and operating even if it's not driving anywhere. The outfitting of these things is expensive as all get out and they're specifically equipped. And none of the equipment on the existing cruiser that this would replace is transferable to either of these two new rigs. And I don't know what else more I can say on it other than the need. I think the chief, you know, I'm a believer in, you know, I'm no subject matter expert on the need nor use of cruisers. He is. He's been pretty adamant about the need on this. I think the town has avoided doing, I think the latest one was about a year and a half ago now that went in on a lease arrangement, and it's three lease payments to own. And I guess there's one more payment coming up next June or July, then we'll totally own it. That's the newest cruiser. It's just out of the repair shop for some little damage it had recently. So, any questions?
Just wanna confirm, so the equipping the vehicle is inclusive in the thirty-eight thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
I don't have any specific questions, does anybody? Chief, is there anything you wanted to add? If you come up?
Unless someone needs an explanation, a little history regarding why we're at this point, I'd be willing to comment on that. Otherwise, I've mentioned it numerous times.
Yeah, I mean, I think in support of the article at the public hearing, you should probably should do that.
Okay. There's been some misunderstanding too regarding a common meat at the Board of Selectment meeting and maybe want to cap it regarding how many cars we do have. So let's set that straight right now. We have four marked cruisers, four, and one admin vehicle. The admin vehicle is not a patrol vehicle, it's not equipped as a patrol vehicle, so therefore it really shouldn't be used as a patrol vehicle. So the four vehicles that we do have, the highest one is the one that's scheduled to be replaced. That would be four zero one, it's an old Taurus. It's eight years old, and that's, I think it's eight years old, that's two years longer than I usually keep them. Years ago when I was hired in oh-seven, we had an issue with the fleet. The first day I took over, we had to go out and buy two new vehicles. So what we did was come up with a plan, it may not be written, but it is certainly publicized over the years. Every eighteen months, you place the order for a vehicle, you take delivery in roughly two years. That's how it works. And if you miss the cutoff, meaning there's only so many of these vehicles manufactured, then you're delayed maybe six or seven more months. And that's a problem, like right now, you couldn't buy two thousand nineteen, they're gone. You have to wait for the two thousand twenties, which are coming out next month. There's only so many to be had. It's a limited field, the people who make these cars now, it's Ford and it's Dodge, and they have a monopoly on it, we don't control the pricing, the pricing is there, it's going up five percent, ten percent every year. This year's is a drastic increase because it's a new model and everything has, nothing's reusable. Everything is new to the vehicle, so the price is up there, escalated higher than what I ever thought. But at the end of the day, vehicles are used, whether or not it's a small community or a large community, they're on the road twenty-four, seven. They, I use this example, if we live in a twenty-square-mile town, you may see the cruiser one time, travel by your house. In Millville, because of the five square miles, you may see it four times. But they still put on the same amount of miles, but you get more coverage out of it. So if we delay with this particular cruiser and you kick us out another eighteen months, what's gonna happen is, the next vehicle that should be replaced is gonna be well beyond that mileage as well. So now you're gonna need two cars. And that third vehicle's coming up really quickly too to be replaced. So you're just procrastinating and actually spending more money because they go up in cost every year. So the prudent thing to do is to replace four oh-one with the money and the public safety, because the money is there. It was limited to talk about the ambulance. The ambulance today is not a need that we have to address today or even this year. I've spoken to my liaison for public safety and we had a great conversation yesterday. We're probably two years out, even consider replacing the ambulance. So that should be taken into consideration, maybe spoken about at the last meeting. So given that and the amount of money we have in stabilization, we're kinda going backwards if we don't replace this vehicle now, because it's gonna cost us more and then we'll probably need that second vehicle right after.
Chief, do you have the, like, the four vehicles, their ages and...
I do, okay. Yeah, you're gonna test me here. Four oh-one has about a hundred thousand miles on it, I believe.
Is it eight years old on that one?
Yeah, I believe it's eight years old. The next one in line is four oh-two. I believe that's a fourteen, two thousand fifteen, yeah, fourteen and fifteen.
You don't have your glasses, chief.
Well, I didn't have the, I didn't... So Peter has those.
I have pretty pictures.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, so that's, the four oh-two is a two thousand fifteen Ford Fusion. At the time this was done, which was probably six months ago, they were fifty-eight thousand miles, so I'm sure you have sixty thousand now. You have four oh-five is a Ford Explorer. It's a two thousand seventeen, and six months ago it had forty-seven thousand miles, so you're probably close to fifty, sixty.
That's over, that's almost sixty now.
Okay, so that one gets a lot of use, I've seen that one around a lot. Your newest one is a Ford Explorer that's leased, that's the leased one with the final payment coming up next June or July. That's a two thousand eighteen model year. And when this was done, it was six thousand miles, six months ago. I see in your notes you have nineteen thousand, so thirteen thousand miles in six months. And then the other car that's not a patrol car, the admin car, is a two thousand fourteen Ford Fusion. And when that was done, it had seventy-eight thousand miles, six months ago, you're probably, you know, more than that. So that's the fleet.
And keep in mind, the Fusion, when that was purchased, that was purchased used because we didn't need a police vehicle per se. We purchased that from Imperial for a real cheap price because it's a passenger car. We put lights in it and that's what it's used for. But the other vehicles, the bottom line is you also have to keep in mind that the line item for repairs, I think it's five thousand dollars this year, that normally has to increase as soon as a car leaves the warranty period. We have to pay for everything, right?
What's that period, chief, sorry?
Yeah, it's three-year thirty-six bumper-to-bumper, or it's five-year seventy-five thousand on the powertrain. So by this time, in a couple of months, there's only one car that's under warranty. So you have four cars that we have to pay everything on, and they're expensive. I really wanted to have the fleet mechanic here tonight, but he couldn't make it. I asked him to give up his opinion on the vehicles, not, you know, requesting what I wanted, but give him, he was gonna give you a good synopsis of what the condition of the cars. And he's gonna tell you that, because he spoke to me about it. Four oh-one, the one I'd like to get rid of, he described as a money pit and breaking every day. So that's okay, but we have to fix that car when it breaks. So you'll have three cars out of warranty. Just when you consider just the oil changes, tires and brakes, and we do that religiously every year. That's a thousand dollars right there, just for those maintenance items. So that line item this year's gonna have to be increased just to cover the projected repairs. So if we, I know it doesn't, it sounds like, you know, we're spending a lot of money to make a little money back, but that new vehicle, the warranty on the Dodge was a little bit... It was actually interesting. It's three-year thirty-six bumper-to-bumper, but it's five-year a hundred thousand miles on the warranty on the powertrain. So that's, you know, and it's a four-wheel, all-wheel-drive car. So whatever breaks, up to a hundred thousand is repaired. And that's generally how long we keep it. Hundred thousand's the target date, target miles, and that's where we are right now. So that's the push for the car.
Chief, what's the tangible difference between doing this now versus doing this in May?
Okay, if I do it in May, I probably won't take delivery until September, maybe. So that's why we push it back, and all the other cars catch up on mileage. So when you get that car in September, now you're already waiting for, I'll be sitting before you asking for the replacement on the next car. I mean, it's probably worth the investment to lease them, given the low interest rate we do get. You know, the three-year lease we have right now is fifteen thousand two hundred per year. So you're paying, I think it was eighteen hundred dollars for the entire lease period, which isn't a bad thing, if you wanna lease it.
So fifteen, fifteen thousand a year?
And that's the lease to own, by the way, it's the lease to own. You make that third and final payment, you own the vehicle.
Okay, what does the Explorer end up costing?
We have, yeah, forty, we have one year left on it.
If we bought it in year one, how much would it have cost to then?
About eighteen hundred dollars less than the lease would have been. That's about eighteen hundred dollars to lease it.
Yeah, I don't know that. Question becomes, is interest rates gonna continue to stay low? And I don't know that anyone can predict that.
No, I agree. I agree, but once you lock in on the lease, when you lock on the lease, that's the rate you have for three years. So if we buy a cruiser now, it'll lease it.
The argument is for lease.
Right. So your exposure's only seventeen thousand in this year's coming budget.
But that comes out of, don't we put that out of operating expenses versus capital expenditures?
And now you're moving it from the public safety stabilization to the operating by doing lease versus buying it, right? And so, you know, to Peter's point earlier, where he's saying, public safety stabilization, we're using for cars, we're using for vehicles. Now we're saying, we're gonna do what with that fund if we're gonna be using it out of operating?
I think the intent of that fund...
I'm just trying to think, you know, big picture here, right?
Intent, from what I can see was used, the money's used for that purpose. Public safety, whether it be police cars, fire trucks, or an ambulance, that's what the money should be used for, rather than take the money from any other revenue source. It should come from public safety. And the money's there. So it just doesn't make sense not to spend it and buy the vehicle because it does save us money in the long run. When you procrastinate a little bit more, and I hate to use the example, but I will, you know, last year, the same vehicle was like eight thousand dollars cheaper. That's the price increase. So if we wait again, the vehicle's gonna probably, you know, be up another fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars when we buy the next one. So that's just...
I mean, the argument I'd make is that if we've got the Public Safety Stabilization Fund, I'd rather save that eighteen hundred dollars than finance costs.
I agree, I agree.
I mean, I don't know if I'm as much a proponent for leasing, but that's...
Well, and the other thing on that Public Safety Stabilization Fund, the way it's now set up after last town meeting, is that half of the ambulance receipts go into that every year. And the tracking on that is eighty, half of eighty thousand dollars the last few years. So that's forty grand a year goes back into that savings fund, if you will.
And based on what you've laid out here with those four, you know, marked cruisers, if six years is what the target plan is, and I don't know if that's officially what the plan is, but, you know, we're two years out from four oh-two being replaced, right?
Right, exactly right. And if you do, if you check the status of the fleet, it works out perfect. By six years, you're at a hundred thousand miles, and that's a good return. I really can't think of any other police department that goes that long with a police cruiser as your primary police cruiser. I haven't seen that anywhere. They're usually replaced between four and five years, tops at around seventy-five thousand. We go at least six with a hundred thousand miles. You're pushing it, we're pushing it a little bit. So the only thing that happens is we spend more money on repairs. But eventually that catches up to us. Because if you lose a transmission today, that's only one component of the car. So you drive out with a new transmission, but the remainder of the car has a hundred-plus on the car. So then you start losing other things. It's not like you're a passenger car that you keep at home and you drive to and from work. These cars are twenty-four, seven, when they idle endlessly and we can't turn them off. When you see it stopped on the side of the road, conducting radar, you can't turn off the car because you're gonna kill the battery within ten minutes. Because we've got the computer, the radar gun working, the radio's working, it draws the battery very quickly. So that's why the idle time really affects these cars.
So what's the strategy here? I get it with the four cruisers, the four marked cruisers, you're thinking every six years, we're, you know, it sounds like behind on the one that's eight years old. What's the, are we gonna let the admin one run longer? Like, is that something that we don't need to replace every six years?
In my opinion, the admin vehicle, the one I currently drive and the guys use occasionally, we can drive that until a major, major expense occurs. So I always say you drive that till the wheels fall off, as long as you're performing basic maintenance and basic repairs. If you drop an engine, you're not gonna spend six thousand dollars on a car that's worth, you know, four thousand dollars. It doesn't make sense, right? So you keep that car till you have a major expense. That's what... That's what I would do. The minor stuff you can fix, you know, a hundred here, a hundred there, that's okay, but that car still should go another twenty, thirty thousand miles without, hopefully, anything, you know, expensive going down. But that car though, when you replace that car, that's not as expensive as a, as a cruiser. That car's gonna be, if we go back to Imperial, that car's gonna be fifteen thousand, that's what we paid about for the last one.
Cause I'm just trying to think of long-term, how the funding is gonna work, right? So if you're gonna get, to Peter's point, if you're gonna get forty thousand dollars a year going into this public safety stabilization fund, if everything kinda works the way it, it sounds like it will, so you'll replace a cruiser every two years, so on every other year, you get forty thousand dollars that goes in there, but you've got, we got the ambulance and the fire truck, so that's when it's really gonna hit that account, right?
At the end of the day, if you speak quickly about the fire department, I don't know what position we're ever gonna be in to buy the fire engine. Uh, that's gonna be a million dollars, that's far beyond what we're discussing here. That's gonna be some type of debt exclusion or something like that, so I don't even know. That's in the future, I mean, who's to say we don't regionalize or do something like that out there? So that's ten years out. And the ambulance is probably, like I mentioned earlier, two years or three years out.
We're way ahead of our capital plans online.
Yep.
I'm glad we're working on the capital plan, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Question for the chief, if he could just talk about the need for four cruisers to operate during...
Oh, sure, thank you. Um, the reason why the cruisers last six years, and they last a hundred thousand miles plus, 'cause we assign one cruiser to each shift, so that same, that cruiser's only used for eight hours during that day, and the fourth cruiser is for that second man who comes on duty, when we have two working, 'cause if that fourth cruiser's not there, then the other cruisers accumulate the mileage, 'cause they're used more than eight hours a day. My previous employer, we, we went through a cruiser a year, we went through five cruisers per year, 'cause that same cruiser worked twenty-four seven. Um, that's the way they did it. A lot of departments do it that way, car stays on the road twenty-four seven, uh, every day of the year, and in one year, you have, um, fifty thousand miles on it, and they get rid of it. But we can't do that, we don't have the luxury of doing that. So this, maintenance in this rotational system allows us to keep the cars, you know, that long. I had spoken to the chair of, um, the capital committee, she was gonna reach out to all the departments. That would've been great, because that information would've been, you know, fully appreciated, because what we do is unheard of, the way we stretch our vehicles, it simply is. I wouldn't say it if it wasn't, um, so I might buddies, I speak to all the time, other police chiefs, I wish I could buy their trade-ins, no lie, 'cause they trade them in around seventy-five thousand or sixty thousand, and they get nothing for them, but they can't trade them in, they can't sell them to me. That's why I'd be buying those cars. So that's it, so that's the presentation for it. If we can, if we can afford to buy it, we buy it, if we don't, um, it's just next year over here, jumping down, up and down for two cars.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions from the finance committee? Any questions from anyone else regarding the police cruiser? Okay, all right, moving on. Article six, feasibility study Millville Elementary School water supplies, water system supply. See if the town will vote approve the sum of no more than fifty thousand dollars to be transferred from the general stabilization fund for the purpose of paying the costs of a feasibility study for water, water system supply alternatives for the Millville Elementary School, one twenty-two Berthlet Way, Millville, Mass. zero one five two nine, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, the quote "study." Set amount to be expended at the direction of the board of selectmen or take any action relative thereto, submitted by town administrator and board of selectmen. Explanation: Millville Elementary School and the town continue to deal with MES water treatment challenges and related costs. In June two thousand nineteen, the town filed a corrective action plan with Mass DEP and is under order to better treat, monitor, and test their drinking water, and to identify a longer-term solution for MES potable water, including implementing more effective treatment solutions, finding alternative well sites, or connecting with another municipality water supply. The water in the school, in spite of successful treatment and quality test results, is not being used for drinking purposes, and the children and staff are supplied bottled water. As the issues are complex and technical, the town will need to engage in engineering and other water supply expertise to properly evaluate and identify solutions that will best serve the community, including means of funding. The town is working with state and federal resources and may be able to obtain grant monies for this effort, as well as no doubt costly long-term solution implementations, so, so some or all amounts expended under this article may be reimbursed through available grants. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Would Peter or Erica like to speak on behalf of us?
I spent four hours today with our water system operator and a technical PhD representative from the, uh, agency that was, uh, connected with us by Congressman McGovern's, um, office, and the two of those gentlemen spoke chemistry, math, science, and stuff, so my head's exploding. Um, we spent three hours in my office, and, uh, the purpose of the visit from the representative of the agency, through which we would ultimately seek, um, assistance in, in terms of, uh, low-cost funding and/or grants that might be available, of which it doesn't sound like there are many, um, to do something, and the something is yet to be determined, right? But in this explanation, we've ta- talked briefly before, Mass DEP, um, wants us to do something maybe different than we're doing, okay? And today, as, as we went up, after spending three hours in my office, we then went up there to show the gentleman, the doctor, uh, how the system operates, what's going on. This came through on my phone. This is the nasty gram from Mass DEP that says, post this on your website, post this in a visible place at the school, that says, you're still in, not in compliance with, uh, water testing, water, water standards. The thing is, this is a quarterly average, so really, what it relates to is an event that happened a ye- almost a year ago, and the quarterly averages are still exceeding the amounts for chlorine byproducts, disinfection byproducts, um, from treating the water to remove the iron and the manganese, which is quite a challenge. The water since then has been testing just fine, and in fact, I would bet that the water that comes out of the taps there is far better than anything many of you are likely to be encountering in your, in your own home systems. Uh, certainly has been treated and tested significantly. The gentleman, um, so wh- where I'm trying to get to is, I don't know what to do with this one, I guess, is where I'm at. You know, I put, I put this in here because we do have to do something at some point, but the, at, at the end of the day, it, I'm still processing what I, uh, discussed, and I know Ken's tried to get smart on this as well, uh, has gotten smart on ma- much of this, as smart as layman can be, I think is the way to describe it. Um, I might be coming to the selectmen's meeting before town, special town meeting Monday night, and recommend that they withdraw this article, but I don't know that yet, so I don't know how to advise you what to do here tonight. Um, the town, in order to avail, because things are so complex in terms of whether, what we're treating is fine, which arguably it is, and disappointingly, it's not being utilized, even though we do treat it, it's expensive, we just had to, uh, replace the pump and the down, you know, four-hundred-foot-deep pump, and the piping that came up, uh, the school was closed, uh, for a day while this was happening. Uh, there were breaches in the, um, the galvanized pipe that it, the water comes up through, and so it was leaking, and so the pump wasn't pulling up enough water, and the pump itself was all jammed up with iron, oxidated ferri- ferules, I can't even say it. Um, so, um, again, we have to do something. The DEP, um, really is anxious to have us look towards finding water from the Blackstones of the world, but listening to this PhD today, he would say, you don't know how good that water is, and I would, I would say that, and when it travels from there, how it's tested, to how it gets to where it comes into the school and is tested, you're getting different water. Why? 'Cause of whatever it's passing through and what happens to it, well, I don't, I don't understand the chemistry, but it's, again, complex, so you ultimately do have to, if you look to find a different solution than what we're doing now, or an improved solution to what we're doing now, you're gonna need to hire some expertise that we don't have. And that's why this was put there, the question is the urgency. Um, I think we might bring it back later when we know more at the spring town meeting, but it's something to discuss with the select, the board of selectmen. Um, so that said, that's why that article is there. It is also circu- it, it is all, also complicated by the regional agreement negotiations, and how the capital costs are covered under what comes out of that thing, and whether that's solely borne by the town or otherwise, uh, under that, so there's a whole bunch of things that are unknowns related to this. Uh, so I, I guess, in some, as I try to articulate it, I probably will suggest pulling it. But it's a need at some point.
Okay.
Why, why pulling it, just 'cause it may not be needed now?
I, I think we, we aren't even smart enough to know what we're gonna ask for in this, I think is the best way I could put it. So how do you, you, you could be, you know, the guy, the PhD guy, the doctor, said, you, you'd be better off putting in, an additional filter system on top of what you're doing for thirty grand, instead of spending fifty bones on a study that might tell you, not, won't tell you enough, and, of the unintended consequences of what path you might take.
Yep.
That's really it. So, sorry, I couldn't give you more.
Any other questions from finance committee? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Jackie?
So, not really a question, but just kind of a general statement. I mean, when I was on the board, Bella just turned ten, and I was pregnant, so over a decade ago, this has been an issue, right? The elementary school has been an issue. Um, and I remember when I was on the board, we had done several feasibility studies with, um, small water, I, I don't know if they're still the ones, right? And, and I mean, we had them go in, and they blasted the tanks that was holding the water and stuff like that, so I guess, I would, I would hope, that I know Peter's relatively new, um, and, you know, boards change and come and go, but I would hope that somewhere somebody would have kept some sort of comprehensive record as to what's already been done, because rather than throw fifty thousand dollars at a feasibility study, I think they've been done in the past, and of course, things change and evolve over time, but if, if there's a clear record of, and I know it dates back more than ten years, right? So there should be some clear record-keeping, whether it's with that water operator or DEP or within the town, I know Chief Landry's, you know, been very involved in it, um, I think Steve Ferno, I know it, when I was on the board, John Laura was very active up there. Um, so in my opinion, before we throw more money at this, I would just hope that somebody, somewhere, is doing a really thorough investigation of what's already been done, um, before just throwing more money at a feasibility study, so.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, none, okay. Hang on. All right. Article seven, proposed borrowing by Blackstone Millville Regional School District. To see if the town of Millville will approve the one million eight hundred seven thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars borrowing authorized by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs of the Millville Elementary School boiler replacement project located at one twenty-two Berthlet Way, Millville, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which proposed repair project will, would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Said amount to be expended at the direction of the school building committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of fifty-nine point twenty-one percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided, however, that any borrowing authorized by the town of Millville hereunder shall be contingent on the passage of a Proposition Two and a Half debt exclusion vote, or to take any other action relative thereto, submitted by Blackstone Millville Regional School District. Explanation: The ME- MES boiler, which has a ten-thousand-gallon underground oil tank, is nearly twenty-eight years old and has exceeded its useful life. The Mass School Building Authority has approved nearly sixty percent reimbursement for this project to replace the existing oil-fired boilers with more efficient and environmentally-friendly propane-fired boilers. A study was approved at last year's Balltown meeting to evaluate alternatives, with the solution being presented as the most appropriate. This is a debt exclusion funding item and requires a majority vote, as well as majority approval at the subsequent special election. Would the school like to come up and translate for us? Maybe if you could just start by introducing yourselves to anyone who might not know you.
Sure, I'm Matt Earnworth, I'm the assistant superintendent for the district.
And I'm Erin Vinoco, I'm the vice chair for the school committee.
Would you like to start?
Um, so what I do wanna point out is that we have already been approved the grant, um, at the fifty-nine point two-one percent. Um, so the estimated coverage of that is about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, that grant is, is approved to us based on the town funding the remaining amount, um, in this fiscal year. So, um, the way I understand you're reading this, it says we submitted it as the debt exclusion in this amount, but in my opinion, it shouldn't be the one point eight million. It, we, we would never need to borrow that amount to cover the difference. I think you have the maximum...
Yeah, we, yeah, um, we were present at another meeting, and the cost for the town will be between seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and a maximum of nine hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, so that would be the, that would be the maximum borrowing that the district would do on behalf of the town. We wouldn't be borrowing the full one point eight, because the reimbursements from MSBA come in as the work is being done, so we never would've had to pay the entirety out and wait for the reimbursement, so we just, we would budget for just the costs that we would assume, not the entirety.
Could you just repeat those numbers, Brian?
Sure, the, there were three options presented, uh, in the, in the proposal, and the lower cost to the town would be seven hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars, and the high estimate is nine hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. And both of those numbers include a hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars in contingency costs, which potentially may never be spent. And the contingency costs are some of the costs that are not reimbursed by MSBA, so that entirety would go back to the, um, would be removed from the, the total of the borrowing.
So was this, I guess, was this your submitted article? Like, did you submit...
We have not voted on the amount yet, it has to be approved by the town first.
So Peter, Peter and I had some communications back and forth, MSBA sent draft language for the town to use, there, this number may have been plugged into the draft language, um, so that might be how the number got in there, but it wa- we didn't finalize the specific number to, to move forward, 'cause I know that every time I've come to, I went to the capital planning meeting, I've come to the finance, we've said that the maximum would be the nine hundred and nineteen thousand.
But MSBA's approved total budget project, the project budget is one point eight million, and they're, they're funding eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So my fear is putting such a large number on the town floor and then sending it to a ballot, and it's, we would never need that much money, could be, uh, the difference between approving and not approving, and this is, this is something where you, you can't, you don't approve it this year, and we can't go back and say, okay, MSBA, we'd like to reapply. We've been turned away for our high school, we've been turned away for, you know, it's, it's this year or... this year, or we start over. So I would hate to see that happen. So for the number to be modified, is it something you need from us?
So that isn't a question for me. It cannot be modified, Erica?
I don't think so, we're too close to meeting.
Okay.
You can make an motion on the floor.
But what about for the ballot on December fourth?
The ballot doesn't have a dollar on it.
Yeah, ballot's not written yet. But the warrant has to be.
So we would make a motion on the floor.
So, yeah, Peter, if you want to join us, you can join us here. That's okay, or Erica, whoever is most. So if I'm understanding correctly, we have a warrant that's been posted and is final. This warrant is posted to the townspeople, the warrant cannot be changed. The first question is, can the motion on the floor be for a dollar amount that is significantly less than one million eight hundred seven thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars?
Yes, so of course, I'm pretty sure that can happen, you know, as long as the moderator allows it. That said.
Not, not half of that.
That, that said, this, this is provided by, you sent to us from the MSBA. That's their wording, this is the amount that they're approving their fifty-nine percent on. So we just lifted this from what the school sent us. So I think we both need to go back and find out whether the, this, because there's a particular motion that was also provided with the wording. I think I might have that drafted somewhere here in my pile of stuff. In any event. I can double check with MSBA regarding whether or not.
Yeah, I think we gotta double check about that amount, because the motion has that number as well.
There may be a stipula, I do not believe so, but there may be a stipulation that states that you have to approve the entirety, though would be anticipating only borrowing the amount.
It looks like they're kind of legally protecting themselves by saying it's non-entitlement and that the reimbursement could be fifty-nine point two-one percent of eligible approved project, project costs. So I think it is confusing for the, like, for the voter to understand, oh, you see the one point eight, like, no, without reading the full article. So if we can make it clear what the actual expectation of borrowing would be, either through just another sentence at town meeting. I just would want to understand what Town Council has said, too, like.
Well, Town Council's asked to review this wording a couple of times now.
I guess.
But he didn't get into the.
Did he understand that the actual net amount?
He was looking at language, not necessarily the budget number.
I think, I think another big concern is that it's being proposed as a debt exclusion. So we've gone through MSBA for our roofs, and there wasn't the following ballot to, you know, to follow up with. So I think to the, the layperson, the town voters, it's going to look like we're borrowing one point eight million dollars, so.
And this doesn't say, it actually says.
You had said that you had a chart?
I do, I do, I can show that in a minute. But to see if the town of Millville will approve the one million eight hundred and seven thousand, the borrowing authorized by the Millville, so it does not say up to. It's to see if the town will approve that dollar amount specifically of borrowing.
And if you have a chart, that's going to give them a, an idea based on one point eight million, not.
I don't, no, my chart is based on nine hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Well, that's good news.
But this isn't my chart, actually. So this is UniBank's chart, so I wouldn't be particularly, you know, presenting this if that's something that, that the school intend to, intended to present when going through this article, and that may or may not be allowed by the moderator, but the schedule was.
I will have to double check with MSBA and be in touch with Peter, because I can speak definitively and say, we did not borrow the entire cost of the JFK project that we're currently going through.
So and then the question becomes, I'm sorry to cut you off, but then the question becomes, if the article as written is what is presented at town meeting, because either moderator says we can't, we can't motion a significantly smaller number or larger number, or the language in this article is set, can the ballot then have a different number than is approved at town meeting?
Well, like I said, the ballot has no number.
But it has no number because nothing's been approved. But if this is the amount that's approved, then it's not gonna have a number at all.
No, I'll read you what it says. The ballot that's been approved is Proposition Two and a Half debt exclusion ballot question. Shall the town of Millville be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay the costs of the Millville Elementary School Boiler Replacement Project located at one twenty-two Berthlet Way, Millville, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto? So it really is educating people on the, the number you're really looking for and that you're planning to borrow versus if in fact the MSBA still stands firm on, this is the right wording.
Keeping that language.
Right, that they, they provide, because they, their edits were all over this.
Where did, where did the wording for that ballot question come from?
Town Council.
I don't know how you can have a debt exclusion without a dollar amount. Like, how does anyone know what they're?
Unbelievable to me.
No, that's how, that's how they usually work, though, I've seen.
So the voter's gonna walk in, not having seen things, and just see a blank check?
That's correct.
That's correct. I'm very concerned about that.
I would be very concerned about that.
And that's why I'm saying, it's because MSBA is involved, we don't get a second chance at getting the grant, the reimbursement.
Is the school presenting at the special town meeting? I will definitely be there, I will be presenting at the, at the town meeting.
I'd say like, at least a slide that shows, all right, here's the total cost, layout the fifty-nine point, and then here's the town's, you know.
Yeah, and we have the same, we have the same financing schedule that we've provided that shows the impact of the hundred thousand dollars, you know, on tax per hundred thousand dollar value of a home. I also, aside from the semantics of the, of the ballot and the more, the article, I'm happy to speak to the project. I did bring some pictures of, I don't know if I can just.
I think we've all seen them.
Yeah, those are some of our own.
There's about ten or fifteen of each of these pictures, you'll start to see pretty much the same thing in each of them. These are the pipes that are coming from the, these are the pipes that are coming from the oil tank into the building. So as it has been discussed on a couple of occasions, a lot of times, a lot of times, oh, this is one of our, you can all circulate them, there's about. So it's different, all same picture? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's ten of, there's about ten of each.
So pass them around.
Just take one and pass it around. You may be looking at one rusted and corroded pipe, you may be looking at two rusted.
You can only imagine that.
What do you say again?
That would be a problem.
Yeah. I think, I think.
Matt, can I ask you a quick question before? Who is the School Building Committee? Do we know?
Where are you reading this from?
Yeah, the warrant, it says said amount to be expended at the direction of the School Building Committee.
Currently, the School Committee itself would serve as the School Building Committee.
Should that say authority? School Building Authority?
Or school.
I would think.
Boilerplate strikes again.
Right.
Counsel, I, council was given the language, so.
Okay.
The only thing, other thing I would like to point out, and I wish that Jen was still here, she mentioned that her capital plan was, didn't match what they've worked on. She mentioned the twenty thousand dollar HVAC system for the elementary school. That is not what we're talking about, we're talking about a boiler. We did have an, have an HVAC repair that was needed over three years ago, so I'm going to have to assume that that's what she has in her hands. The main part of the building that is air-conditioned is the auditorium and the sun, the main office. So the auditorium was not working for several years. We were able to roll that into our roof project, which was completed over three years ago. So I think what she has in her hand, HVAC is not a boiler. I know for some, I know, I think she thought it was one and the same, but if she's looking at a three-year-plus-old capital plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
It's a different system.
I don't, I don't want to speak on behalf of Jen, that we're being here. But I will say, I think her point was really not to single out the school and the school item. I think the point was, we really don't know what any of this stuff is because of three-year-old plan and there's nobody around that can answer to it. So they're starting over, so I think that was her whole point, but, point taken. I know there's also an oil tank replacement for fifty thousand at the school or sixty thousand, I don't know what that is, but it's.
Well, that would be null and void if we're replacing our boiler. The oil tank has been.
That kind of was the point, was like, this is null and void altogether. So we shouldn't be referring to it on any decisions.
It's not accurate as a total.
That tank will be coming out as part of this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just to speak, to speak to the need for this project, as we've mentioned, the boiler is twenty-eight years old, it's exceeded its life expectancy, there's no real way to say how much longer it will last. The bigger concerns, quite frankly, are with the oil tank itself. It is a double-walled oil tank, however, it needs to be cleaned out regularly, and every time that it gets cleaned out, our custodian will anecdotally let you know that they keep explaining that the walls of the tank are getting thinner and thinner. You can see the condition of the pipes in these pictures. Originally, we were asking the question of, well, what happens with, you know, if it conks out in the middle of the year and we don't have the MSBA funding? The answer is, well, we would have to pay a hundred percent of the cost of replacing the boiler, and we'd have to pay the cost of bringing in emergency heating so that we can continue to run the school during those, those times. But really, the bigger concern from a financial perspective is if the tank or these pipes break, and then we're dealing with an EPA nightmare. And that, given that there's all well water in the area, that's a problem. So we really are trying to stress the urgency of, of moving this forward for everybody's sake, not just the, the fact of, you know, keeping the kids warm and making sure that the building is up and running. But it's, this is eventually gonna be a liability, so. It's not already.
We, we've been very lucky to be able to maintain the, you know, the major parts of that building with the assistance of MSBA. I have our roof project from years ago, they reimbursed fifty-seven point seven-four percent, so we're even getting a little more.
What has our rate of approval with MSBA projects been throughout the years?
For Millville?
Yes.
Well, and they, they even assisted in building that school. MSBA has, I believe, funded every major project that Millville Elementary has needed since it was built twenty-plus years ago. We, as a district, have been, have not been that successful. Case in point, our high school. We submitted for a core renovation, we've submitted for accelerated doors and windows, and we've gotten nothing on that building. We are getting it on other, other buildings, but.
Yeah, we have two, this would be the second accelerated repair project that we have going simultaneously. And actually, the JFK project should be done by Veterans Day, so it won't be simultaneous. The high school core renovation was denied, and I would imagine.
Do they give reasons when they deny?
Well, it's the amount of money they have, so this is, this, we're, we are at the top of this, this is all they approved this year. So, and it was a total of nineteen million. And they, they base it off of need. And I'm sure it's because they saw the feasibility study and the, the need for it. But when you look at this list as to what was, and what was submitted, we submitted the high school at the same time, and we were denied high school but approved for Millville, so. And, and Millville has always benefited from, from that, you know, being able to maintain that building to what it is today.
Just one quick question, if approved, when would the project start? Is it just immediate?
I would imagine we would try to get it, get it started immediately if it's approved, because we would try to have everything done prior to coming into the next school year.
Our doors and windows for Blackstone were approved last year, and they were started, they were, the major part of that was done this summer.
This summer, yeah. And there was some actual delays with that project, because there's a huge, there's a huge backlog of windows being ordered right now across the state. MSBA is saying there's like eight-week waiting time on custom windows, because it's so huge.
Five of these are windows and doors, so, one, two, one, and the rest are doors.
So, yeah, thank you very much, Peter. So I didn't bring the, I didn't bring all of the architects' project manuals, but Peter presented the schedule and the timeline, and they're anticipating that if we move forward and keep to the timeline, this project would close out by December of 2020.
Okay, and I, you know, I mentioned this last time that you were here regarding just an overall plan for the capital needs for the school. I know you just mentioned the high school project, I haven't seen and I'm afraid to see the dollar amounts associated with that, but have we made any progress since last fall with that plan?
So, this was referenced in an email exchange, too. I respect that the committees are asking for a, a plan to cover all of our capital needs. However, the administration that just came in and was trying to straighten out some of the financial aspects, we're not engineers or architects. So we're in the process right now of engaging the correct people to do an actual assessment of all of our building and maintenance and mechanical needs, and that's gonna be gone, we're gonna be presenting that through the School Committee, the School Committee will have to approve of that. And then the plan is to move forward with a real study of what needs to be done and the timeline of each of the things that need to be done, and then that's when we would be presenting that to both towns.
Can you describe that? You said we're in the process, so like, where in the process are you? Have you identified firms, or are you just thinking about being in the process?
We haven't, we haven't.
It has not made it to our agenda.
Okay, so it's something we know needs to happen, it hasn't actually gotten to the point where we've discussed it.
But the background, the background work has, has been happening. So there's been initial development of an RFP for the project. However, we need to discuss it and get approval from the School Committee before we would be bringing it forward to anyone.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions from Finance Committee? Okay, thank you guys, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for the school or on this article? Okay, moving on. Reimbursement to Purchase Twenty De Prater Street. To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of one hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred dollars to reimburse the purchaser of the lot identified as Twenty De Prater Street from the town due to inability to acquire clean title to lot or take any other action relative thereto. Explanation: In October 2018, the town conducted an auction of parcels acquired by tax lien and a private party acquired a parcel identified as Twenty De Prater Street. Subsequent title research revealed that the purchaser could not obtain clean title to the parcel, and the purchaser seeks to cancel the purchase. The Board of Selectmen has chosen to resolve this potentially more costly controversy by reimbursing the private party for the purchase price as bid plus incidental costs. The auctioneer has offered to donate eight thousand dollars to the town toward this cost. The town is not purchasing this parcel back, but rather reimbursing the bidder since valid title could not be provided. The town's ownership of this parcel or portion thereof would have to be confirmed through further title search. There's no submitted by on this one, Peter, is it submitted by Peter?
Counsel.
Submitted by counsel, okay. Can anyone speak on behalf of this article?
Okay, well, we try, I would say counsel, with some edited suggestions from yours truly, provided the explanation. It is a, it is a legal matter, that, hence the term that, to, the board of selectmen choosing to avoid potentially costly other activities. This was a parcel that was sold without anybody obtaining or finding clear title to it. It was sold at auction, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars would be in the free cash number that you would, that we would have as soon as we have it as part of the land auction proceeds, which were. land auction proceeds, which were, if I understand it, somewhere in the neighborhood of eight-hundred thousand dollars, uh, for three major parcels, um, this being one of them. So it was decided that it made the best economic, uh, political, uh, community sense to just reimburse the purchaser, then try to defend what otherwise was a threatened lawsuit regarding this transaction.
So Peter, what's the net cost to us essentially for making the lawsuit?
A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred dollars. Because we're getting eight thousand.
Fifteen thousand, like-
Oh, oh, after the one sixty? Yes.
Is it really going to cost us?
Fifteen thousand bucks, right?
Right, when all is said and done, fifteen?
Yep.
Does that include the legal cost that we paid thus far to continue to research it?
Uh, we have-
The question is whether that, and whether that fifteen thousand dollar cost to the town includes legal cost spent to research this issue at this point?
No.
No. Okay, um, all right, so, do I have questions about this? Has there, um, has there been any communication regarding the availability of free cash with the purchaser in the sense of timing?
Um, well, the purchaser has been patient in that this issue surfaced several months back, and, uh, we worked with the purchaser and purchaser's legal counsel, uh, to reach this type of settlement subject to town me- special town meeting approval, voter approval, okay? So what is Plan B if special town meeting voter approval does not take place? Plan B is we're back where we were, which is their threatening, and we, we dealing with defense. And defense will involve, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we do have, uh, you know, insurance on something like this that would provide the defense, the cost of the defense, they would not provide the cost of any settlement, um, at least in terms of the dollar amount that we're talking about here, um, should we fail in the defense using, uh, insured legal counsel defense. And we do have a ten thousand dollar deductible on any insurance type of defense like that, so you, we'll, we'll at least be out the ten grand versus fifteen, in terms of pure out-of-party, plus any incremental legal costs, in addition to any incremental costs we've incurred to date, which is nominal, frankly. Um, and we'll also have a distraction, and there'll be, you know, there's all sorts of ramifications with that. So that's why the Board of Selectmen, uh, believed it would be in the best interest of settling it in this manner, um, if the voters approve, and, uh, also believe that the, the purchaser who would be reimbursed, um, you know, does other activities in this town, so is, in essence, part of the community, so it seemed like the right thing to do, if, speaking for the selectmen, which arguably I can't technically, but-
So when you were, um, discussing this article, I guess in bringing this article forward, and I remember when it was initially introduced to us as just that, you know, vague article that was out there but required a lot of free cash, right? So when you were discussing the article, was the intention always to use free cash to reimburse this purchaser?
Yes.
So, um, how, if any, does this, does the fact that we don't have free cash and we're taking these funds from our stabilization account affect the way you think of this article?
Well, the way I think of it is if you use your analogy of stabilization being a savings account, and free cash, in essence, I would say is akin to a checking account. Um, this is where we expect the checking account will be replenished once certified free cash is known, once free cash is certified by state, which is, I can't tell you exactly when, but it's, it's not too far in the distant future here. Um, so the replenishment then would take place at, um, annual town meeting, presumably, when you all would recommend putting money from free cash into the various stabilization accounts, one of which would presumably be this, for the magnitude of this, and in addition, I'm sure, a greater magnitude.
Okay.
We have, it, it, right now, the free cash checking account, we have an accounts receivable for that checking account.
What, um, you might not know this answer, but what is the cost to ha- to host a special town meeting to the town, approximately?
Um, a special election is about two thousand. A special town meeting, I don't really know, I don't think it's that, you know, it's more than that, I imagine.
Okay.
So would we go for another special town meeting?
I mean, I mean, I'm, not to like, show my, my perspective, I don't know how I feel about this article, other than to say I understand giving this person their money back. Um, I feel strongly that this should have come from free cash, and I remember when we had initially discussed, you said, there's going to be a lot of angry people if free cash isn't certified by special town meeting.
Correct.
Because I think the presumption across the, you know, um, I certainly don't want to speak for the Board of Selectmen, but the presumption was that we, this hundred, same hundred and sixty thousand dollars is going to flow to free cash, so it's basically just saying, we should have never received it, give it back. But now what we're doing is we're taking that same, uh, monies from our stabilization account, which we, you know, approved to go into our savings account at annual town meeting, and we have to fight to get that same money replenished back in at a later time. So to me, it's not a foregone conclusion that at annual town meeting, the voters at that time, with the circumstances they are presented, are going to say, oh yeah, this should go back into stabilization, because last year, those other guys voted to put it into stabilization in the first place. So that's kind of why I'm struggling with this. It would have been, um, ideal to have this situation in front of a special town meeting with free cash certified, so that we could say, look, we have a hundred and sixty thousand in free cash, it's not actually supposed to be there, let's just give it back.
So there are three real drivers of this special town meeting. One is, the principal driver is the timeframe for the boiler project, so that really triggered the need for a fall special town meeting. This bundled into it nicely in terms of the issue, we, we knew there was going to be a special town meeting for the boiler project, this surfaced, it fit well within the settlement negotiations that we were going to have a fall town meeting at a yet-to-be-determined date. Now, of course, it's determined. The third one, I would argue, is your replenishment of your reserve fund, because you're going to need that thirty-five K available sometime, some amounts of that sometime in the not-too-distant future. So those are the three pr- primary needs for this special town meeting. The free cash, yeah, uh, uh, you know, how do I look at it? We're close, we're close, but close only, you know, only counts in horseshoes and hand grenades. It doesn't, doesn't count, uh, you know, we're at the ninety, we're, we're at the one-yard line, but they could hold us off, you know, we're not making the touchdown. Um, my goal was to get free cash at least by October thirty-first, to submit for free cash by October thirty-first, that, before this stuff surfaced, okay? Um, and that is six months ahead of where we were for last year's free cash, and infinitely further ahead of where we were the prior year's free cash. So, a- and efforts are being made quite diligently to get it. Um, that said, a week ago, there were ninety reconciling items to be resolved before, before we could submit for free cash. Of those ninety items, fifteen were in the assessors department, and those have been resolved. Another fifteen have been accounting, the entries that were made in error and had to be identifi- not, not, I don't know if in error, but I, discrepancies that need to be substantiated, corrected, or resolved. Those have been taken care of. And then there were sixty within the treasury and collection part of the, you know, house. And there's four sort of financial legs of a stool in a municipality. You've got assessors, you've got treasury, you've got collections, and you've got accounting. And the acca- so the accounting has to take all of that stuff and fix it all, and so, for example, today, I'm talking to our main town accountant guy, Derek, um, he's going through ambulance receipts, bank account, and there's a sixty thousand dollar window deposit into our account that is yet to be explained. Those are the, that's the largest one, but those are the types of things that, you know, need to be supported for what is that, so he can make the bookkeeping entry and can then finally file for free cash. So he's in here tomorrow, uh, the goal is to see what we can get done before Halloween is over. But I don't know, you know, so it's possible, but as time passes, it's less and less possible to get free cash known before town meeting. If we know it, we'd be talking free cash on this, this item. Okay?
Do you have a question?
Nope, I certainly, if I was the other party, presumably, they're watching and they know how they face a two-thirds vote, not a majority vote.
That's correct.
I, if I was them, I'd be asking for a contingency plan if it doesn't pass, but-
Well, they did ask me, what, what do we do if it fails?
We call a special town meeting when free cash is available. That would be by-
Well, if it fails on free cash, if it fails because of free cash, I, I guess that, that's the case. I would hope it doesn't fail because it's free cash versus stabilization. I understand your discomfort there, but I, I would hope that's not the reason. If, if it fails because of that reason, um, whatever, the voters, you know, will have to decide that, that's, that's their right. Um, but when asked by the principal, um, what happens if we don't get a positive vote? I said, well, I guess you're back to suing the town.
Well, to Aubrey's point, if it fails because it only gets sixty percent of the vote-
Yes.
Then that's a clear issue where it would have passed, so a subsequent meeting with more emphasis, maybe it gets a pass for free cash, right?
Uh, they're good to work with, they will have counsel at our, as guests at our town meeting.
Can I ask a question, Peter?
Of course, go on.
Um, am I correct that when we did the sale of these parcels, didn't we hire a title company to do that on our behalf? So was there some sort of, I guess, oversight within the title company? Was it something that was overlooked on the town's behalf? I mean, obviously, it's a legal matter, so I know you can't get into too much specifics, but am I correct that there was a company that should have, um, overseen this process? And if we're out fifteen thousand dollars, is there any sort of liability, um, that we could kind of hold that company that we hired to do this process for us?
Um, yes. Um, yeah, not to show too any cards, of course, there are, there were multiple parties involved in this transaction, um, uh, who, some could argue, um, might have suggested going a different way. And the town, uh, has not given up on all of its rights in any of this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Peter.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, moving on. Article eleven.
Article eleven.
Yeah. Okay. Article eleven, Town Bylaw Personnel. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town Bylaw, Chapter twenty, Section twenty dash eight, compensation system as follows. Section twenty dash eight A shall be amended by adding the following language: The compensation plan shall comply with applicable provisions of the Commonwealth's minimum wage laws. In an event of any inconsistency, the minimum wage laws shall govern. Section twenty dash eight D, Classification and Compensation Plan, shall be amended by deleting the columns for the offices of Town Administrator, Town Accountant, Fire Chief, and Police Chief, and inserted in their place the following: Town Accountant by contract, Town Administrator by contract, Fire Chief by contract, Police Chief by contract, submitted by Board of Selectmen. Erica, would you like to speak? I guess I'll just read the explanation. This article is intended to remove the limita- limitations presented by the bylaws as written on recruiting, retaining, and negotiating with positions typically subject to contract and at all times subject to budgetary and voter-approved appropriations. It is also intended to ensure where bylaw amounts prove less than increasing minimum wages rates, that those minimum wages rate shall appeal, prevail.
So basically, this one is, um, more so for the, uh, minimum wage, because right now, I think what it says in there, there's a dollar amount, so we would have to update that every time minimum wage changed, so we said, if we just put in minimum wage, we can change that. And then the other piece came in, because there are some employees that are by contract, some are by this range, so we're just trying to make it consistent across the boards and just do it by contract.
Let me just pull up my- So, right now, looking at the ranges, we have everybody with a range, except for, um, Police Chief. So under that guise, wouldn't it just make more sense to put everyone with a range, including Police Chief, or we're just trying to make it consistent?
Yeah, I think we went back and forth with that, and is Fire Chief on range as well?
Uh, Fire Chief is, um, Fire Chief is a range, it just says part-time salary, twelve hours, I mean, but then there's dollars.
I believe he was contract. I put-
It says dollars in here.
I think Fire Chief is contract, so, yeah.
I mean, I just pulled it today.
I don't know where that one, that came from, but-
From the what?
This came from, yeah, the Millville bylaws.
From the bylaws.
Yeah, so I think there's, there's some inconsistencies, as you see, so we're just trying to make it consistent across the board, so we said, we'll either do it by metric, as some of them are up there, or by contract. And I don't know where the final decision came in, why we did it by contract, do you recall?
Well, I, I, you know, one of the others, selectmen suggested this.
Yeah, so we just went by contract on that one, so, but like I said, it was more so for the, uh, minimum wage.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Does the article have to pass in full, or can you, um, pass like, the minimum wage piece and not, like, the change to twenty D or?
We can amend the article on the floor-
Okay.
-to exclude it, and, and, but you have to pass an article in full, so if we want to exclude a piece of it, we could.
Okay.
Um, and if people had a hangup on the contract versus metric, I would say exclude that, but definitely put the minimum wage, because that's a more important piece, in my opinion.
Okay.
Thanks, does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Please, sir.
Does anyone have any questions on this article? Jerry looks like he has a question, but doesn't want to.
No, I'm just, take and roll in.
Okay, all right. Article twelve, Amend Library Operating Budget. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds the sum of twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to fund the Millville Public Library for the remaining fiscal year 2019, or to take any other action in relation thereto, submitted by citizen's petition. Library representatives, would you like to come up?
Please.
Lynn Foley, twenty-eight, Maureen Way.
And I'm Colleen Anderson, I'm not a resident, but I'm the director of the library, so I'm just here to answer questions, if anybody might have questions. Lynn will present.
So we're putting forth this article, this citizen's petition, to hopefully get the library back to, um, the status of a certified library. Um, the benefits of a certified library and the reasons why we think it's important to get back to that status is, um, you know, the one big one, all residents of Millville can use any library throughout the state if we are certified, but because we're not, um, they're, they're banned from any other library. Um, with the school district, the way we have at the regional school district, um, Blackstone students have a, a, an advantage right now, they're able to access any school, um, I'm sorry, any library in the state where the Millville residents, the Millville students cannot. Um, it would allow our citizens to have access to over fifty-nine million items beyond what our library owns, and it would be delivered right to our library for them. Um, a big thing, too, is, is we're not a, um, eligible to apply for any grants, any state library grants, um, and that includes millions of dollars in construction grants, um, small library grants, you know, the CW-MARs grant that allows us to buy into the CW-MARs system, um, at a much discounted rate when we are certified, so, um, really, we, we can't assume that everybody in this town has money, has a job, has a good job, um, has access to a smartphone, a computer, a printer, libraries have all that, and, and it levels the playing field for all our, um, residents, so. Um, I, I know at the last meeting, we were asked to kind of, you, we're, um, libraries have to, um, be funded at a certain level in order to be certified, so that's what's called our MAR, our Massachusetts, what's that stand for?
Municipal, um, appropriation requirement.
Right, so, um, we were asked, and I think it was Gary who asked us, um, to, to just forget about the MAR, to forget about, um, what's required, and just kind of figure out what we need to operate the library. So we did that. So this is what is in front of you now, and any questions on it, or?
Can I, can I make a few comments also? Um, so, just, just a few things about what's happening with the library. So we don't worry as much anymore about how many people are crossing the door, right? Because actually, I carry the library on my phone, so people say to me all the time, well, isn't the library on your phone now? And my answer is, yes, it is on my phone. That's where we can get like forty thousand eBooks for the price of twelve fifty per resident in Millville. So Millville pays twelve fifty per resident for a forty thousand- So Millville pays twelve fifty per resident for a forty thousand dollar budget for the library.
Actually, it's a little less than that now than with this.
Yeah, with what we currently pay, right. Oxbridge pays twenty-nine dollars per resident, Upton pays thirty-three, Whitensville pays thirty-seven, Mendon pays forty-four, and Blackstone pays fifty-six point seventy-two. So for the price of a book, you can get the library on your phone if you want. You get streaming video, you get about, well, there's fifty-nine thousand items, but there's also about forty thousand eBooks that you can download. And I think we had six hundred downloads last year of Millville residents. You can get audiobooks, you can get basically whatever format is available now. Magazines, they just added a lot of journals and magazines that you can get. And you can, if you want to read them on your phone, you can read them on your phone. We have an app called the Libby App that you can download to do that. So we don't worry quite as much about that, because the other thing about the network is that what we're paying for is, you know, if you're a young mother and you want to go to Blackstone, to use Blackstone, right, because we don't have a children's librarian, then you can go to Blackstone, and you're going to get a friendly response if they know that we're certified, because what that's saying to them is, okay, Millville's paying their weight, right, for the resources that have to be purchased for this network. So, you know, we're accommodating. Sure, use our library, use our resources, you can check books out here if you want to. If you want to go to Oxbridge and do that, you can do that. So really, the whole thinking has transferred from local to these huge networks and to e-resources, really, because people are obviously transitioning to e-resources. They want to be able to download books. So that's just a little wider explanation of how it all works. And right now, you know, forty-two thousand, I think, is what we're looking for, for a budget, around there. Forty-two, eight thirty-one. That's pretty much flat from what we had back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. So we haven't really been, you know, looking for increased dollar amounts to support us. But just to give you a better idea of, okay, what's that all paying for? You know, if you're a resident here, what's it paying for? And the other thing I just wanted to add is that that building is such a central building on Main Street. I'm not a Millville resident, so I do what probably most people who aren't Millville residents do. I come in Central and go on Main. And that, to me, is Millville. You know, I don't see the most beautiful parts of Millville, but really, for people that are outsiders, the buildings on those streets are pretty important, because that's kind of what speaks Millville to them, you know? And we, with our budget, have actually been contracting with the Worcester inmate program in Worcester to keep that building up. So they come, they clean the outside. They were supposed to come in April to paint the outside, because it really needs painting now. And what we do for that is we make lunch for them, and we give them coffee in the morning. So we had actually purchased the paint and everything, but unfortunately, it rained that whole week that we had scheduled. So we're going to try to do it again. And, no, I guess we didn't, we were going to do it in the fall, we're going to do it in the spring now, in April. So we kind of keep that building looking fairly good on a very important street in Millville, and I think that's something that's overlooked sometimes by people that live here. So that's just, that's a few other things to think about, as far as why we would like that money to be certified. Because the additional money really does bring in a lot. If we're not certified at all, you cannot go and check books out at Blackstone. They're not going to let you, they're not going to let you do it at Oxbridge.
And that seemed to be a really important thing when we were getting the citizens petition.
I am so upset, because I use Blackstone all the time, and they're not letting me check books out. We always, you know, that's over and over again, that's the complaint we get, because people like to use Oxbridge, they like to use Blackstone, Blackstone has that big library. They're open many more hours than us, they have a children's librarian, so that all makes a big difference. So, anyway, any questions at all?
Yeah, I have a question about this handout. So first of all, thank you for putting this together. I'm trying to look at the book requirement, and I'm trying to understand. What I see here is you took the total, sort of the amortized, or the total amount for the fiscal year, assuming you get, that you need to fully staff. So you've got a number here of twenty-one thousand five hundred for salaries, fourteen thousand three hundred for operations. Comes to a total of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. And then what you've done is you've multiplied that number by the nineteen point five percent to come up with your book requirement.
Right.
Now, the nineteen point five percent is specified for a town with two thousand four, to four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine residents in town. But, I hate to say it, I believe this calculation's incorrect, and I believe the correct calculation is actually a higher number. Because the way I read the requirement is that the total, what you multiply that nineteen point five percent against is a total appropriation for the year. Not what you calculate is needed for salary and operations or anything else like that. So you guys have backed it in. Because, and the reason I say it's incorrect is if you actually take now that thirty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-two, and you add six thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars to it, then that book appropriation, in that case, only represents sixteen percent of your appropriated budget.
So I can, I can see what you're saying. I think it's still okay, because we do not have to get all of that money from the town's money. We can get it from the friends, we can get it from some fundraising.
For the books?
Yeah.
Okay, and I agree with that, we had that conversation last, last spring.
We can get some of that from the friends.
Right.
It's not really called that here, though, but, okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Is this salaries, is this the minimum hours, so?
That's the minimum hours to get a hundred percent reimbursement on grants. So we're doing thirteen point five hours right now, so that cuts down with the state, if we were certified, what the state will give us on the grants that they give us. So they give us a, if we're certified, they will give us a municipal equalization grant and a library incentive grant. Those are two grants that come out of the LSTA, the Library Services and Technology Act. And we've been getting about, between fourteen hundred and two thousand, I think, they send us by, by annual checks. And if you are open fifteen point five hours, they'll send you the full amount that they figure for our size town and for what we have appropriated.
Sorry, I said it was fifteen?
Fifteen, it's fifteen hours, yeah, you have to be fifteen. We're now thirteen point five, so we, if we get certified. Yeah, we have to be fifteen, right.
Fifteen or fifteen and a half?
It's fifteen, I think, yeah.
So there's a little bit overage there, too. And then the assistant librarian, what's that role in determining the, the minimum required?
I don't believe that that factors into it. We just have to be open fifteen and a half, fifteen hours.
The assistant librarians, actually, we're getting paid under the minimum wage for Massachusetts, so we up that to the minimum wage for Massachusetts.
Okay. Okay, I mean, for me, this is the, a good starting point for the detail that I think we were looking for. I think, you know, as it gets toward this coming budget cycle, this is the detail that I'll want to see, to be able to kind of really, like, understand and talk through the library budget. I don't need to hash out any other questions I have on this right now, but do anyone, does anyone else have any other questions about this schedule?
So we do need to amend it, I guess, when we get on the floor, because we did write the article for twenty-nine five.
You don't have to, you can, your article can be whatever your article, you want your article to be.
Well, I'd like it to just be the, we would like it to just be the twenty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents.
Then, yeah, when you make the motion, because it's so close to what is in the article, then you can just motion that amount instead of the twenty-nine thousand dollar amount.
Twenty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents. And then we would also have to amend it, because it was mistakenly put in as FY nineteen, and it was supposed to be FY twenty.
That's easy enough to amend on the floor. Okay. Thank you.
So.
I don't, I don't have any other questions.
Just one other statement, we're putting this forth at the special town meeting in hopes, I have talked to the woman at the state, and she is telling me that if we do get this in, she will be able to push it through in December and get us recertified right away. So, big benefit to the town, to people.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about this article? Peter, come on up, yes.
If they could just clarify for me, because right now, it's my understanding, from looking at, none of the salary, so you're open, whatever hours you're open right now, and none of the salary is paid out of the town's budget. It's paid out of the library money. And what I'd like to know is, where's that money come from? And how much do they have, and how long will it last, if they have a sense of that?
So, I think I can, but I might need your help. So that money is in our, what is it called? I don't remember. A reserve fund. So it's in our library reserve fund, which has been built up through the years from those grants that we were eligible to apply for, because we're certified. That is depleting quite quickly. We like to reserve that money, traditionally, historically, for programming, for maybe some, the books that weren't funded, or what are some other things that we've traditionally used that for? Oh, yes, sorry, we built the front of the building, exactly.
It really is getting depleted quite quickly, seventy-five thousand now. So we could conceivably, maybe a year.
Yeah, sorry. What's in it right now, thirty-five thousand?
Under thirty-five, yes.
Under thirty-five thousand currently in the library's reserve fund, which has been recently used to pay salaries, historically been used for programming and books and other.
Building the front of the building.
Good items, building the front of the building.
And there are some, there is a lot, not a lot of maintenance, but there is maintenance that needs to be done to the library that we would like to use that money for, but if, you know, we have to continue, continue to pay salaries, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
We have paid how much this year out of the, out of the reserve fund?
Seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars has been paid out of that reserve fund for salaries alone.
For salaries, okay.
No.
I think that's.
Sorry, four thousand, that's right, too, yeah, thank you.
That's really, actually, for three months, then, if you start in October, it would be about, it would be about fifty-two hundred. So we paid over, a little over five thousand out of reserve for salaries.
Okay, so to repeat that, there's.
That's for the thirteen point five hours that we've been open.
Okay, including the assistant librarian?
Yes.
Okay, so a little over five thousand dollars has been paid to date to cover salaries for the library, from the reserve fund, from the library?
Since, since July.
Since July. Yes, Peter.
So in that savings fund that they're talking about, that they're paying this payroll out, what I'd like to know is, did the money that was raised when that young lady dumped me in that dunk tank about twenty times go into that fund?
No. Okay, no.
Well, can we, can we come up, okay, sorry, I just have to.
So, actually, this is a great library, I have to tell you guys. We have a Friends of the Library group, it's fabulous, led by Jackie over there, that just started, what, a year and a half ago?
Last July.
Yeah, last July, okay, a year, a little over. And they just won a statewide award, they brought in five hundred dollars to their fund for, for the most creative fundraising idea. There's a group of Massachusetts Friends of Libraries who gave them the award. We also just got a Unibank grant to do.
Can you just say that it was for the flamingos?
It was, oh, it was Florida, yeah, whoever got flogged. Personally, I don't live in Maryland, I didn't have to go through that, but. We just got a grant from Unibank to do a semi-monthly movie night for the community. So there's a lot going on with the library, that's very, very positive. So, what was your question again? So about the money, the money went into the Friends. Yeah, it's not commingled, so it went into their fund.
I understood.
They can use that however they want to. At every meeting that they have, which is monthly, I go to them and say, here are the many needs that we have, can you help us out? Now, we'd like to keep, rather than having them pay for books, we actually like them pay for things like children's programs, right? Or equipment needs that maybe would be out of the ordinary, so we wouldn't have to take them out of the reserve fund. So we just got a sign for advertising programs that we can put in front of the library, and the Friends paid for that. They have helped with programs, they've been giving us two, around two hundred.
Southwick passes.
They have Southwick passes that we sold at a discount to residents. So they've been a very, very valuable, you know, help at this time, and hopefully they'll continue to be ongoing. But we like to not have them involved with operational stuff. It's kind of the frosting on the cake.
I just got a chill when I saw her, that's all.
Yes. You did your part for the library.
Any other questions for the library? Jackie, I know I'm calling on you. Do you mind just coming up quickly and just giving us some rules of the road for the special town meeting?
So, Jackie Lima, and I'll be acting as the town moderator. I was elected to the position last year at the annual town election, and I served in the meeting in May. So this will be my first fall special town meeting. So I've been taking a bunch of notes, I've been reviewing things this week, I was traveling last week, so I'm trying to get up to speed right now. A few things that I did make note of tonight, it was, one of them was in regards to the Article seven for the school. I feel that, as a moderator, if a motion is made to adjust that amount to a lesser amount, nearly sixty or forty percent of that, that would certainly be with outside, outside of the scope and the intention of that article. So I, I think that that needs to be clarified before. I don't think that the motion could be made that way, but certainly an amendment could. So just the motion would need to be made in the amount as written in the article and as disclosed and publicized to the public, but on the floor, an amendment could be made for a lesser amount.
Up to that nine hundred thousand?
If legally, that's okay. I would allow, I would allow the amendment, I won't allow a motion to be made for a lesser amount, but I would allow an amendment, provided that legally, that dollar amount that is motioned is enough to satisfy the requirements for borrowing. That I don't know, but I can tell you the procedure of town meeting, the motion couldn't be made, but the motion that was made could be amended to the lesser amount, provided that that gets through legal when you go to borrow. That I'm not going to advise you on, okay? The other thing that, that I enacted for annual town meeting that I think worked very well, that I will be letting everybody know in the beginning, the person who makes the motion is generally the person who sponsors the article, or one of the sponsors, because some have multiple. I allowed at annual town meeting, the person to make the motion, the sponsor, five minutes to make the motion and to discuss their article. After that, I allowed three minutes for anybody who wanted to speak. Those time limits seem to work really well. It gave everybody an opportunity to speak, nobody went on too long. At the end of three minutes, if there were still valuable points being made, you know, it's at my discretion to allow continuation or to shut off the conversation, especially if there are multiple people wishing to speak on, on an article, if there's a long line of people. Three minutes, we'll move on to the next person, you can get back in line, you can speak again, and.
Did you say, I'm sorry, Jackie, did you say the sponsor of the article has the opportunity to present, or the person making the motion?
It should be, usually, it's one and the same.
And is that, because I know we have several articles that are, for example, Chief Landry and Peter Crusoe, so they could make, you can be a non-resident and make a motion in the meeting.
So whoever sponsors the article can make the motion.
Regardless of citizenship or residency, or whatever you call it. I don't know the answer, I'm genuinely just.
Yep, I will double-check my notes on that. I believe it has to be a resident who makes the motion. So if, yes, so if, if it's sponsored by town administrator and a department head who is not a resident of Millville, it would probably need to be motioned by the Board of Selectmen.
And then the person who.
And then that, whoever makes that motion. Yep, so the person who makes the motion, the resident who makes the motion, has five minutes to discuss.
Got it.
Yes. Also, we, I mentioned at the beginning, in terms of, I printed up my kind of rules, too, that discussions and questions must be relevant to the motion that we are voting on. It's my job to ensure that the rule is followed, so I will limit discussion if I feel that a comment or discussion is not relevant to the scope of the article that we're discussing. I will allow town council or the accountant to speak, even if they are not residents. And after reviewing the articles, too, I will probably open that up to include Chief Landry, if the superintendent or assistant superintendent wishes to speak, librarian, you know, whoever might be relevant. I will list that out. If there are any objections from the audience, obviously, then we won't allow them to speak, but most of the time, although they're not. although they're not residents, they have valuable input to the articles. And I think that was pretty much all I had. The other thing is, I will send an email out when I get home tonight to anybody who did sponsor an article, that if there are any handouts or presentations that they're interested in displaying, they should be given to me. I think last time we had done it after this public hearing, it was forty-eight hours after. So, it'll probably be, today's Tuesday, Thursday night by midnight, that way there I can coordinate with the town clerk to get anything printed, coordinate with Tim to get anything on audiovisual that we need. And again, any sort of presentation would be included in that five-minute presentation that you have after the motion is made.
Anyone have any questions for Jackie?
Quick one, Jackie.
Sure.
Can you walk through what the procedure is for an amendment? So, if Article VII, if, would it be a, so would it be like Erin, basically, like a school committee member that is a town resident?
Yep. Would make the motion in the article, in the, she would make the motion for the article in the words written in the warrant.
So, go through that, read through that, yeah.
It would have to be seconded, and then immediately thereafter, she can say, I would like to make an amendment to this motion, and change, it should be in writing, it should be handed to the town clerk in writing, change the amount of one eight oh seven six seven, six eight seven, to whatever your new amount would be. I would ask for a second on that amendment, so as long as somebody else amends it, then I would ask for discussion on the amendment. So, at that point, she would discuss why she's changing that amount. And at that point, I would allow, if the amendment came immediately after the initial motion, I would allow conversation, the five minutes for the entire discussion of this, as well as why that is being amended to a different amount, then we would call for a vote. If the vote on that amendment passes, that's the amount that's authorized to, or that's the, the way it's worded is now we're going to ballot, right? So, that means that, yes, it's, it's going onto a ballot vote. The amendment fails, then we go back to the original motion that was made in the original amount, and we vote on that.
Writing this down, Erin?
Yeah.
Go back and watch the video later, right?
But again, you know, in terms of what that legal amount is, whether it's one eight oh seven, six eight seven, or a different amount, that's not my jurisdiction, I can just tell you procedurally how, how we would vote on whatever it is.
Quick question on lowering an amount, is there a threshold that you can't go under?
So, that's what I'm saying, I wouldn't let her make a motion for nine one nine five twenty.
Okay.
Right? But if she made this motion, and it was seconded, and then she immediately amended the amount of her motion in writing to the town clerk, from this amount to this amount, then we would vote on that amended amount.
Okay, you got that?
I think there's not supposed to be a significant change on either swing.
Right, that's why I want to just make sure we're clear.
I think it's higher or lower, right. I mean, if she changed it to one point eight million even, right, and you drop seven thousand, that's within the general scope, within the spirit of, of the article, right? But to drop that nearly in half is not what townspeople have been alerted to fourteen days.
Well, it's less.
In my mind, I wouldn't want to ask for double the amount, but.
Right, but there are some, there are some rules around dropping it to allow.
To lower it, absolutely.
Yeah, if it's significantly different.
It's just a significant change. You know, I mean, you could argue, so say you, say you kept that same amount, one point eight million, but instead of replacing the boiler, you want to replace the roof. Would that be a significant change? I would say yes.
It would be significant, yeah, I would fund it, so.
Right. But you know what I'm saying, so there are certain things that you can swap and you can't swap. So, even if the dollar amount stayed the same, but the purpose of borrowing changed, I still wouldn't allow that. Right? That's, that's, the public wasn't notified of correctly of what they're being asked about that.
Yeah, and I just think, once this goes through whatever process it is about to go through to determine the language of the motion, we need to obviously make sure that it's not just the amount that's amended, but the language that goes with it, and that that is still in the spirit and cooperation of what's posted on the warrant, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it's clearly written this way, under the pretense that we would be in a particular situation that we're not in right now, and so that, therein lies the problem. So, can you change it enough to still meet the spirit of the article, but adjust the amount?
Yeah. And the second thing in this article, which again came from MSBA and the administration, talks about borrowing being authorized, and you haven't done that yet. So, there's still a little, you know, we've touched base with council on that, and they weren't concerned because the school wasn't concerned, but I think we need to do a little more homework on that piece, too.
Do I have any other questions for Jackie? Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions before we close the public participation portion of this hearing? Going once, no. Okay. All right. So, we're at nine thirty-five, two and a half hours in.
Nice.
Okay, so I think, and you know, you're, I guess for members in the audience, you're more than welcome to stay or go, I just ask that you be courteous and keep side conversations to a minimum while we go through these, and just so we can focus, so. All right, so I thought I would just say the name of the article, and then we could talk about it, and then we could see.
Can we, before we start, can I, I just want to give a sense of where I am as I look at these articles, the conversations we've had over the last, I want to say month, the joint meeting that we had last week. And there's a number of things that stick out to me. Obviously, we've hashed and rehashed the lack of the free cash certification, what that means. We've, Aubrey's pointed out, our stabilization balance, certainly we discussed last spring, the history of the stabilization balance, how it's gone up and down, how low it was prior to last spring. I want to remind everyone that it's less than two years ago that we were in the midst of the proposal of a quite large override. The initial two and one point eight million scaled down, and then we revisited this past spring. And during those discussions, we weren't talking about buying these capital items, instead we were talking about the town being dissolved, we were talking about the town being, going into receivership, we were talking about the town employees all leaving. There are a lot of doomsday scenarios that were being discussed at the time and seriously promoted, not just in the interwebs, you know, but coming out of this building. So, here we are, from the last override attempt, about six months out, and we have, you know, a healthier stabilization balance, because we sold some properties, and because we got our act together enough to get a multi-year free cash certification in, and let that into our bank account. And we have just reactivated a capital planning committee that's been on hiatus at least since 2017. And I don't know how active they were before then, but certainly since then, they've had no activity, right? And so, this capital plan, this five-year capital plan that was put on the website today, you know, Jen, who, full disclosure, is my wife, pointed out the HVAC replacement, Mr. Caruso had brought that up at the meeting last week. I see, Henry Chief, that this plan calls for a replacement cruiser every year, so it's more aggressive than what you're promoting, not every eighteen months. My point is, we don't have a plan in place. So, you know, next week, we'll talk about, or our next thing com meeting, we'll talk about, I went to the annual convention this year, and they have different sessions every time. This year, one of the sessions I attended was the capital planning session. And so, I got to see how the town of Arlington runs its capital planning. Now, Arlington has a budget that's, I think roughly eighty times the size of Millville's, and, you know, massive staff, it's huge. With the organization at large, you need more structure, you need more planning, but certainly it was eye-opening and, I think, educational to see how they approached that. And then after Arlington spoke, DLS got up and spoke, or DOR got up and spoke, and kind of what their general guidelines are to towns. And it's a lot of things that made sense in terms of having a target expenditure each year for capital plans, having a five-year plan that's actively updated each year as an integral part of your budgeting cycle, which is what our bylaws call for, by the way, right? So, this is not something new, this is something that the town has been deficient in doing. And then also looking at, you know, having stated prioritization and taking all the capital needs of the town, prioritizing them, laying them out in a sustainable fashion that allows the town to be self-sustaining. So, you know, there's an ideal situation where we get whatever the resource is periodically, and then there's what the town can pay without dramatically increasing taxes. So, this town has tried, we'll fix Millville's problems by increasing taxes. The result was an overwhelming no. So, whether you have the argument about our problem is right sizing revenues or right sizing spending, we're taxed with trying to make this town sustainable. And that means putting in place more found financial processes and procedures, this is what this committee has been doing since we started, we've made progress, it's slow, it's painful, it was painful last budgeting cycle, a lot of things that people needed and wanted weren't approved. And in many cases, it was, we're still working on the process. Well, the same thing in my mind applies to this capital planning committee. And when I look at any request that comes up for a capital expense that isn't an emergency or isn't time-sensitive, can't wait till the annual town meeting, when that committee has promised to have us a plan, I'm going to vote no. I'm not going to make a judgment on whether we need a police car today, I'm not going to make a judgment on anything else. If I, in my mind, if I don't think, it's not an emergency that they can't wait for the annual town meeting, my vote's going to be no. And so, I'm not going to get down in the weeds and arguing, you know, do we need this or do we need that? So, from my perspective, I want to support the capital planning committee, I believe, in our effort to put that capital planning committee in place, and to support it, and for them to work with us, the department heads and the town administrator. And I'm not going to vote for anything that circumvent that process, just because someone got in line first for the special town meeting, so.
Yeah, you know, I went through a similar process. The past week, I've been thinking about the special town meeting, and what initially started as like, I'm just going to go with it on the special town meeting and kind of vote the way I feel should be voted, but I'm not going to overdo it and do like a presentation, or ended up being, reading pages and pages and pages of finance committee handbook notes, reading like new finance forum stuff, and, you know, here I am. But one thing I wanted to point out to echo what Gary said, these are not like radical ideas that this brilliant finance committee has, has like brought forth. These are just the way it's supposed to be done. Like, there is an entire chapter in the finance committee handbook on capital planning, and it says very specifically how a capital plan should be laid out, how things should be prioritized, how they should be revisited, how they should be modified based on your revenue streams and sustainability. It's not something we've done in the past, I don't care what the brand spanking new MillvilleMass.org like file that got posted today says. These are a plan that has not been thought through the way that this capital planning committee that's currently in session with an entirely brand-new board, a town administrator who's entirely new to our town, a town accountant who is entirely new to our town. We know, we now, as of two months ago, don't have the same accountant that we've had for the past however many, three years. So, to allow the process to go in place and stick with the plan, one thing that came up today that kind of caught me a little bit off guard and I hadn't thought of, was the primary drivers of the special town meeting. It wasn't a lot of these things. It was a couple of items that we needed to have for a special town meeting, very specifically the school borrowing. It upsets me that the school borrowing, the primary driver of the special town meeting, has an article that's not written appropriately. That's like, to me, that's a big fail on someone's part. So, I agree personally with the sentiment. I've said that, you know, a few times at the capital planning committee as well. One thing I, I noticed for the capital planning committee is their votes were all over the map, two to, two to two this, three to one this, four to one this, and the reason is because they haven't had a chance to figure this stuff out yet. You know, like, if we give them the opportunity to spend the time they need, I don't know how many meetings they've had, but I think it's less than five so far, to go through this detail, based on the facts that we are today, put together a true appropriate capital plan that prioritizes things effectively, I will be the first person to support two police cruisers if the capital planning committee comes forth and says that we're behind, and that's what we need to get caught up, and here's how it's going to look for the rest of, you know, the, the rest of the next five years. I'll be the first to do that. I don't want to rush the process by saying, anyone who came forward and submitted an article, yes, it's obviously a priority if an article is submitted, right? So, yes to everything. I think that that's a really dangerous thing to do, and, and abuse, I will use that very loosely, of the purposes of why we're getting together for the special town meeting.
Yeah, the one thing I would say, I echo both sentiments, is we've got to, in our votes here, determine what we, what each of us considers a necessity right now, and what is circumventing what the capital program and committee is going to do. And so, I think that's, I mean, we go through all, it's not every single article. So, to your point, we're not going to vote in favor of every single one, we wouldn't be doing our job, and we would be circumventing the capital program and committee if we did that. So, I think that's kind of something we need to, we need to decide in our votes. So, I, I in part agree, I agree with both of you on that. Ken?
Yeah, likewise, I actually sit on the capital planning committee. And, you know, it's, it's been.
Sorry, I forgot, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. But it's, it's, just like it took this committee a while to come up to speed and interview all the departments and figure out, you know, what the needs are. And the needs are, it, it feels like the, the needs that come in are a huge list, like even more than we heard, you know, when we were interviewing departments. And so, sorting through all that and coming up with the proper plan is, is, is taking some time, and it will take even more time. But yeah, I, I agree, you know, we have to kind of use our, our own noggins as part of this process, and, you know, work through these warrants.
Good, Adrian?
Well, I did not have the opportunity to attend the capital planning committee. Was it filmed?
Uh, yeah. I didn't actually attend the last one.
Oh, okay, good. It was a joint meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think I completely get everybody's perspective, and I think Brian has a good point, is, I guess it depends on what people feel like are a priority now and what are not. I don't know if we're going to go through each individual article to comment on that first, but, yeah, I probably have my comments then.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so let's just talk through them quickly, and then we'll go, no, let's do them one by one, let's talk through them, and then I'll ask for motions on them. Yeah, vote and make a motion and move on, so don't have to go back through. Okay, so Article One, unpaid invoices from prior fiscal year. Is there anything we wanted to discuss about this article? I think it's pretty straightforward, I think it's pretty standard. I went back and looked at other special town meeting warrants, and this one is on most of them, so I have no issue with it. Anyone?
No issue.
Right. So, is there a motion to recommend, on behalf of the finance committee, Article One, unpaid invoices from prior fiscal year as written?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article One, unpaid invoices from prior fiscal year as written.
Is there a second?
A second.
Oh, Ken, you got it.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Article Two, fund capital item, police station HVAC system. Anything we want to talk through here?
Yeah, I think this was the example of something that was a necessity, we had to fund it, and I think it's only right to replenish our reserve fund now for any potential necessities that may come through the rest of the fiscal year, so I'd make a motion to.
Is there any other?
Okay.
I agree with that.
Right, yeah, I mean, if this article stood before us, and it wasn't a replenishment of the state, of the finance committee reserve, and instead it was an article from stabilization, then I would approve it, so I would agree with that. Is there a motion to recommend Article Two, fund capital item, police station HVAC system as written?
I'll make a motion to accept Article Two, fund capital item, police station HVAC system as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Article Three, fund capital item, police station generator. Anything we want to talk through here? Yeah, I mean, I see this as one of the necessary items on this warrant. I, I guess I wish it would have been brought up sooner, like for annual town meeting, but I generally support this one.
Yeah, given its age, it's not serviceable, it's basically obsolete, so I think we kind of, it's a necessity, I think.
Yeah, I agree. I wish, I wish the number was not changed today, you know, it was more determined, you know, ahead of time, but yeah, I, I agree with this warrant.
I think it was seventeen thousand, he was still recommending, it was just if we wanted to go with an upgraded system.
Well, it's eleven thousand.
I think it's eleven.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, eleven versus twenty-six, yeah.
So, we're voting on eleven, eleven thousand.
I think she said eleven thousand would work, isn't that right?
Okay, is there a motion to recommend Article Three, fund capital item, police station generator?
Yep, I'll make the motion to, I'll make the motion to Article Three, fund capital item, police station generator.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, see, we're not so bad, you guys.
We're looking at the wrongs.
Keep going, keep going.
You just wanted to do the easy ones.
Okay, Article Four, fund capital item, senior center generator. Okay, Article 4, fund capital item, senior center generator, discussion.
I would not think this is a necessity, given that we already have a backup plan, and there's currently a grant request out, so I'd like to readdress this one at town meeting, once they know what the grant specifically, what happens with that, and whether or not the capital planning committee recommends it.
Any other comments?
I agree, yep.
Okay, is there a motion to not recommend Article 4, fund capital item, senior center generator?
Yep, I'll make a motion to not recommend Article 4, fund capital item, senior center generator.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Article 5, fund capital item, police cruiser, discussion. This is one of the more difficult ones for me.
Yes.
I mean, in fairness, Chief, I mean, it's difficult for me because, one, I think this committee was very supportive of the public safety stabilization fund and its creation and its continued replenishment of cash via the ambulance receipts, because we all appreciate the importance of public safety vehicles and public safety capital amounts, and so we were strong advocates for that. I, I don't know anything about maintaining a fleet of cars, right? So I can't speak to whether or not this oldest car needs to be replaced, although I can say the, the information put forward makes perfect sense, it's logical, I think it's someone, you know, it's easy to understand why we're looking to replace this vehicle. But some of the things that I, you know, heard in the conversation are lease-to-own options versus purchasing the, the vehicle outright, as well as just the general assessment of our public safety vehicles, meaning fire engine, understand that's looking like a debt exclusion, you know, whatever, ambulance, police cruisers, we have all of these different needs and vehicles, and to me, the capital plan is going to be in large part, public safety, because that happens to be some of our largest expenses. So, I know that the fear is that, look, if we wait too long, we might need to replace two. I'm recognizing that fear and saying like, I would still prefer to wait until May, because in May, I will feel much more comfortable that the, we have a better handle on what these expenses are and the, the money we're getting back into the public safety stabilization fund and just where it all fits in the Millville universe.
I guess the other point is that, right now, we're not utilizing all vehicles at the same time, so if there was an emergency situation where the vehicle kind of died on us, we would still have backup for two shifts, because there's, would be three left, right?
I think the counter is that we know we're going to need to replace that one, right? And that's, that oldest vehicle is twice as old as the next oldest vehicle. Whereas, it's eight years old, the next one, the next oldest is four years old. So that one's either, you know, can we wait till the, till the, till the annual next? Maybe, you know, I, I don't know the real answer to that, you know? Will it not give us problems then? But we know it's going to be getting replaced, and this is the, this is the difficulty I have with, am I circumventing capital by saying, yes, we should get one now, without them going through their full plan?
So in full disclosure, capital did vote four to one to recommend the purchasing of a police cruiser this special town meeting.
Yeah. And so, I guess one question I have is, right now, the, the warrant is for 48, and so the chief has, right, for 48, and the chief has said that, and I'm glad you went through that, that process of evaluating multiple vehicles, or two, two, two-vehicle options, and that the lower one would work, right? And which is 38,000. So, given that the TA and the, and the chief are not residents of the town, would there be the board selectman that would make an amendment to that or a motion to that?
Does that make a difference in your decision?
$10,000?
Does it make a difference in your decision?
I don't know.
I mean, I think right now, all we can do is vote on the warrant.
Right, on the 48, right.
Yeah, we're voting on, agreed.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm leaning towards, yes, we need to, we need to replace that oldest vehicle. If, if all the vehicles were four or five years old, I'd say, yeah, we've got, let's wait to see what capital, but even capital has said we need, you know, has voted for the fact that we need another cruiser, so. And the fact that it's not coming out of...
General.
A, where we would normally want it to come out of free cash, right? But it's good, you know, in this case, it would have to come out of general stabilization, this is not the case with this article, right? Where it's coming out of the fund that's been established specifically for this process.
For this reason, yeah.
So, I think we may have a little disagreement on this, but...
All right.
Any other comments, or?
That's why we deliver, right?
Peter, am I going to have to make my exception, one exception to public comment allowed for you?
I'm so sorry, but just a clarity of this article, it says no more than 48,000, and I can assure you, the motion will be either made directly at 38 or amended at 38.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, is there a motion to recommend Article 5, fund capital item, police cruiser?
So I'll make a motion to recommend Article 5, fund capital item, police cruiser.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three, two?
Three, two. Okay, Article 6, feasibility study, Millville Elementary School water system supply. I mean, I think the fact that Peter came before us and said he's very likely going to recommend the board of selectmen strike this article, and he is the proponent of the article, leads me to say, no, not now, let's do some more due diligence, but if there's further discussion on this, happy to have it.
Yeah, and I agree, I'm all for Peter becoming a chemist and figuring this out.
And doing more research for what the board did 10 years ago, too.
Yeah.
Find out that information.
Okay, is there a motion to not recommend Article 6?
Yep, I'll make a motion to not recommend Article 6, feasibility study, Millville Elementary School water system supply.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so we're not recommending that one. Article 7, proposed borrowing by Blackstone Millville Regional School District. So we are voting on the article as written, because that is how, that is the public hearing, so.
But we're voting on whether or not we think it should go to ballot, and the taxpayer should have the opportunity to decide whether or not that's something they want for their taxes, so I recommend that something like this definitely go to a town ballot vote.
I think the ship has sailed on this one. I mean, it's, we're in a situation where, given the length of the lifespan of the boiler and where we are in terms of the funding and everything else, you just can't responsibly, for really any reason, I can't responsibly vote against this.
Yeah, I would agree, I would hope that the school has some type of a presentation for us at the meeting, that we can kind of clearly...
Smooth this over, yeah.
With the townspeople, and I think we'll get, you know, a receptive audience with that, that that's my hope. I, I agree with you, Gary, I think, to your point, the ship has sailed on, on waiting on this.
I'm struggling. I mean, the reason I'm conflicted, I was conflicted in the first place, because, again, as I mentioned before, I was the only person to vote against the study last fall. The reason for me voting against the study last fall was that there was not a capital plan in place, and I communicated that and that I was not going to vote for any school capital items until there was a capital plan in place. That was the reason I was conflicted, but now I'm conflicted because this is the article going in front of the townspeople as written, right? And we are recommending it, and we don't know who the school building committee is, who's going to direct the spending. We don't agree with the amount that's being recommended, and we aren't even certain that the context of the article is going to get us what we need. So now I'm concerned from a financial, legal standpoint, recommending this article as it's drawn up today. I would be a proponent of not recommending it and being asked on town meeting floor based on whatever facts change between now and then, whether or not I would change my recommendation.
That's a good point, there's, there's a lot wrong with this warrant, right?
There's a lot wrong, at least with this article.
Oh, this article, I mean.
Any other comments about it, or should we make a motion? Okay, is there a motion to recommend Article 7, proposed borrowing by Blackstone Millville Regional School District?
I'll make a motion to approve the borrowing by, be MRSD for the boiler project, do I have to...
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Okay, Article 8, reimbursement to purchaser of 20 to Prater Street.
I don't know that there's, well, I guess, there's the issue of waiting for free cash, but I think in the spirit of acknowledging that Millville did not, I just think that we should just pay the person back, regardless of whether it comes from free cash or general stabilization, I'd like to think that we would put it back in stabilization when we have free cash certified, but I understand the risk around that, but I just, per, well, I think, given that the person is active in Millville, may not be a resident, it's something that Millville did incorrectly, ethically, that they should just get some money back.
Yeah.
I have no argument, yeah.
Yeah.
There's greater risk, you know, by, by not, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree on this one, I think if this article had been before us at the annual town meeting, before we had appropriated monies into stabilization, we would have recommended it get pulled before we voted into stabilization, so I'm okay from that perspective. I would sincerely hope that we'll have the advocacy of the board of selectmen and the town administrator and everyone else on getting this replenished back into stabilization come May, when free cash is certified, but I think this is just the unfortunate situation we're in at this point. So is there a motion to recommend Article 8, reimbursement to purchaser of 20 to Prater Street?
Yep, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 8, reimbursement to purchaser of 20 to Prater Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Article 11, town bylaw personnel.
Coming from compensation, I think you should do an annual analysis of ranges, and I don't think you should leave it open to the board of selectmen to just take whatever contract negotiations, so. I agree with the minimum wage piece, but I don't agree with the eliminating ranges.
Yeah, I agree, obviously, minimum wage has to be paid, whatever the appropriate range is for those jobs, but in these times, I'm not in favor of anything removing authority from the voters in the town and allocating it to a smaller group in this building.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to not recommend Article 11, town bylaw personnel?
I'll make a motion to not recommend Article 11, town bylaw personnel as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, Article 12, amend library operating budget.
So, I'm going to vote no on this one. The reason for voting no on this one's a little bit different, though. It's not judging the time sensitivity, I know the library is pushing this now because they want to get certified for this year. The reason I'm going to vote no on this one is that we voted on this last spring, and even if it's not against the law, in my personal opinion, it's against the spirit of a special town meeting to go back and revisit something that was done at the annual town meeting, when you're likely to have a smaller attendance, you can, you know, rally your troops, come in, and basically override the vote that was taken six months before. So that's my, that's the reason I'm going to vote no.
I'm going to vote no, because we're still taking money from stabilization, we don't have free cash flow, my whole point at town meeting was, we didn't want to take from free cash to fund our operating budget, so we still don't have the money to fund this from an operating perspective.
Yeah, I mean, I think from a finance committee perspective, we made our recommendation at annual town meeting, nothing has changed in terms of financial climate, plan, anything like that. So although I appreciate the detail that came forward, and I would very much want to see this level of detail as we go through the next budget cycle, for special town meeting, I would be a no as well. So is there a motion to not recommend Article 12, amend library operating budget?
I'll make a motion not to recommend Article 13, I thought it was 12. Oh, 12, as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thanks, guys, so, next meeting will be our special town meeting on November 4th, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
When you say our next meeting, are we meeting before the special town meeting? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, is there a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.